Recording in progress.
Counsel, we've started the recording.
Good evening, everybody, counsel and guests and directors and also the people that are attending by Zoom. The Auburn City Council Study Session Meeting scheduled for Monday, June 23, 2025 at 5:30 PM will be held in person and virtually. Virtually participation link to view the meeting virtually, please click to the below link or call into the meeting at the number listed below. Hannah, can you do roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Rakes.
Excuse?
Councilmember Amer.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Sturgis.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Troutmanwell.
Here.
Thank you, Hannah. Is there any agenda modification?
No chair, no agenda modification.
Announcements and reports and presentations. Tonight, we're going to, with the Community Wellness Discussion Item, we're going to have Catherine Hartwell from the Public Health come up and do a presentation. Would you like to come up, please?
Yes.
And bring your guests? And you both can introduce yourselves.
Thank you, council chair, for having us. Thank you, Mayor Bacchus, and thank you, council, for having us. I'm Kat Hartwell. I'm a pub, I'm with Public Health Seattle and King County. I'm a project manager working on the Climate and Health Adaptation Modeling Project, which I'll be talking about tonight, and I'm with Bradley Kramer. Do you want to introduce yourselves?
Yeah, Bradley Kramer, I'm also at Public Health Seattle and King County. I manage the Climate and Health Equity Initiative there. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Let's all sit here. Before I get started, I just want to give you an overview of what we're talking about. We did the Climate and Health Adaptation Modeling Project here in Auburn over the last year, so I'll give you background on that. We'll share our findings, and then Brad will talk about some potential collaboration. So the Climate and Health Adaptation Modeling Project was based here in Auburn in the last year, and it has been focused on extreme heat adaptation specifically. So you all might wonder why we're focusing on heat when we're known for the temperate climate here in the Pacific Northwest. By mid-century, the Puget Sound area is going to be 5.5 degrees Fahrenheit warmer, and we're not prepared for this warming. Western Washington is less prepared to adapt to heat because we, we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have as much AC as other parts of the country, and when those first high-heat days come, residents are often not acclimated. And we know that heat affects people differently, and it's not equitably distributed. So on this map that I have on the screens on the left, we have the heat mapping project that was done in 2020, and this really informed our project. The areas in red are those in the county that have higher nighttime temperatures, and when you pair that with the map on the right, which shows environmental health disparities, what we see is that the places that are hotter are also those with higher environmental health inequities. And the study also showed that some of the areas in red can be up to 20 degrees Fahrenheit warmer than areas that have more vegetation. These are urban heat islands, and that's why we decided to concentrate this project in South King County and specifically in Auburn. A little background on heat and health. When thinking about who's the most vulnerable to heat, we know certain populations experience heat differently. This is older adults, children, low-income communities, communities of color, pregnant people, people who work outside and in other occupations that expose them to heat, people with chronic conditions and disabilities, and the unhoused. And we focused this project here in the city of Auburn for several reasons. One is it is one of those urban heat islands, but also there was readiness. Auburn, the city of Auburn was more ready than other communities that we talked to, and it seems like Auburn was ready to step forward and could be ready to implement some of the solutions that were proposed by, by community members. So for this project, we put together a group of 15 community members with lived and professional experience who are based here in Auburn, and you may recognize some of the folks in this picture. We have, you know, community health workers, social workers, someone from the Auburn Food Bank, which, as you all know, provides a lot of services here, older adults, and a lot of the people in our group were wearing different hats when they were talking about heat and thinking about heat. We had a veteran who experienced a heat-related illness while serving overseas, who also works in housing and homelessness. So, for example, that person is constantly, was constantly thinking about the issue of heat from using different lenses for the project. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Questions at the end or throughout?
Lisa.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
I'll let you go.
Okay. Do we ask questions at the end or throughout the presentation?
Yeah, the end. Let's do the end.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. So, yeah, for this project, we brought people together for six half-day workshops starting last July, and the last one was at the end of April and in this very space. And we used an evidence-based approach called participatory group model building, and this group, the goal was to co-develop heat adaptation solutions specific to the community of Auburn. And just a quick background, group model building is under an umbrella of something called systems science, which is an approach that looks at the relationship between different factors that drive an issue, and it visualizes it so that there's a place, you can identify places to intervene. And we used a community-based systems dynamics approach. So here's a snapshot of what we did over the last year. We started back last July, getting everyone on the same page with heat and health so that people understand the drivers of heat and how health is impacted. And then we had this group come together to define the problem, which was really, how is heat impacting health here in Auburn to our community members, and what can we do about it? And then you see in that second picture on the top there, that's really that group, group model building exercise where people began mapping out the variables, connecting the dots, and looking for areas where there's a lot of arrows pointing, because that would be a good place to intervene. In between workshops three and four, we actually brought together different groups that the work group felt were missing, whose perspectives the work group felt were missing, including youth, some of the city planners, and Chamber of Commerce members. And we also had a conversation with someone from the Muckleshoot Tribe. And those perspectives were brought in for that workshop number four, where we began to identify themes and really pinpoint and propose solutions. Then we had our prioritizing solutions meeting, and ultimately, the last workshop in April is where the solutions were finalized, and everybody agreed on that. And that's what we're really going to talk to, that's what we're excited to talk to you all about today. So this is, I'm not going to stay here long, but just so you can see the, the final map, you know, the themes are color-coded, but the yellow was also those things that were proposed by, you know, those midpoint discussions with the youth and the tribal members and the city, city planners and those folks. And this then informed the emerging themes, just to sort of go through our process diagram here. This, our emerging themes came from that map, and these themes were overall health and well-being as they relate to heat-related illness, socioeconomic status and heat-related illness, knowledge about heat and the resources available to help manage exposure to heat, the role of policy and government in heat-related illness, and well-being of the natural environment. So these themes were discussed in depth, and solutions were proposed and prioritized, and these, these are the solutions that the CHAMP work group members prioritized. So it's interesting, the, the top solution was cool kits for the unhoused community. This is something that King County Regional Homeless Authority is already doing, and there's a conversation now about how to get these resources into Auburn. Energy assistance is another solution. That was the top second, second solution, and that's really programs to help alleviate the cost of energy for low-income households. This idea of extending cooling center hours beyond business hours past that, that 8:30 to 5:00 PM window, because we all know that heat exposure lasts into the evenings still, especially in our urban heat islands. But there was a conversation, too, about what can we, what can we have at these cooling centers to make people want to go to them, and making sure there's wraparound services. Then there's heat education for workers, which is people exposed to work through their occupation, making sure they know about their risk, but also making sure they know about their rights as well. Community navigator programs, which are already happening at Public Health Seattle and King County, but there was a call for more of these kinds of programs where community navigators are cultural translators and help individuals find services. Community gardens was another top solution, and, you know, increasing green spaces connects to heat, but this is that systems-level thing where if you give people access to food, healthier food, their health improves overall, and that makes them more responsive when there's heat, because they're, they're healthier. And then finally, hosting opportunity circles was another option that was the top prioritized solution, and this is bringing people together to talk about different topics. This can happen in government-led spaces or community-based-led spaces or faith-based-led spaces. So I'll hand it over to Brad to talk about these solutions and some of the strategic plan alignment with them. Yes?
Can I have just a few minutes for counsel if they have questions on, on that piece you just gave us? And then we'll let you, so counsel, do you, anybody has a question? I think Lisa.
I do. So when you talked about the vulnerable population, this may sound silly, but how are pets incorporated into that?
That's a really good question, and that is something that comes up with this idea of the cooling spaces, too. I know that there have been other examples outside of Seattle and King County and outside of the region where people have allowed pets into, into cooling spaces. I think it's something to be considered, and it can be a barrier for people actually using cooling spaces.
It was, well, it was something that I wasn't aware of that was a vulnerable population until, as an employer, I had people calling in sick, you know, I think it was two or three years ago, when we got above 100, 100 degrees and we didn't have AC. People were calling in sick to work because they were scared their pets would not survive throughout the day. And so just as the elderly population, I, and, you know, I have, I have two dogs, and so I empathize with that. So I'm just curious, because it is something to where people are choosing to come to work or not because they're fearful that their pet may, may not be okay in this heat environment. So I'm just curious how we're including those in the, you know, the, the solution.
That's a good point. Yeah, pets also can't, you, you can't take them out on the hot cement on a hot day, you know, absolutely.
Counsel, anybody else? Kate, Ms. Baldwin? Counselwoman Baldwin?
Sure. So I'm curious, I really love the work with collaborative government, where you reach out and you engage members of the community to get feedback and get ideas like that that might not necessarily jump out, you know, in other types of conversations. But I'm curious, did, in the solutioning and in the sessions that you had, was there any sort of cross-investigation with kind of learning from what other communities do, right? So a lot of other places implement different technologies, different programs. Was there any study done or discussion had with those folks around, here are comparable communities, and here are some success stories that could maybe be a good fit in a similar fashion?
If you like, I can have to.
Okay. There was a period of the process where we gave the CHAMP work group members a lot of homework, and this included a literature study that was done that, like, had evidence of other communities and research that related to some of the solutions that they proposed. And so I think there was that element of examples. Some of them were from, you know, the United Kingdom and India, you know, they weren't all even US-based, but they had the chance to look at that while considering the solutions. But Brad, do you have anything to add to?
That's a great example, and they were part of the prioritization exercise, and so they used that to help score them, and they would up-score and down-score. They also then had conversations around it, so, and we took lots of notes. I mean, this is, we had several note-takers at every table that were capturing everything that they said, so I think a rich set of local, local insight to these, these solutions is also one of the products that I'll talk to you about that's coming out of this. And we had facilitators from, expert facilitators. We had, the person leading the group exercise was a, a primary care physician herself, but also does this group model building around climate issues nationally and internationally from Emory University, and we had someone from the University of Washington there as well. So we also had experts in the room that we drew upon live.
Nice. Okay. I have two. You talked about the cool kits. What's all in a cool kit?
Yes, I meant to describe what was in there. There's bottles of water, like cooling towels, sunscreen, sun-protective clothing, that's what's in there.
Okay, and who's going to be distributing these?
So we know that they're distributed through King County Regional Homeless Authority right now. In some communities in King County, there's, I'm not sure where it stands, but there was an open discussion happening to work with YWCA. That is being explored because the Executive Climate Office had a certain amount of funding for cool kits for this heat season, and I'm, I'm unsure where that stands as of today at 5:47.
Because we have a, a great resource community here, you know, spot, that that probably would be a good place also to have a table there to be able to distribute it, is close to our homeless and, and our day and night shelter and the food bank. So anyways, I was just, if you guys have heard about what we're doing here in Auburn with our resource community would be really great. Okay.
One thing I learned, too, with the cool kits is that the KC, the King County Regional Homeless Authority opens up funding, like, every so often, so that they have limited funds for the distribution of cool kits, but organizations can apply in the next round of funding. So I, this is, the YWCA was for a specific round, but there will be future funding for more cool kits.
That's good to know. Then you mentioned about risk and rights. Can you share a little bit more on that?
Yes, I was, in that, it was specific to workers and people exposed to heat through their occupation. And so, you know, the solution for heat education was kind of twofold that was proposed by champions. One is that people don't really know how dangerous heat can be, and making sure that people understand the signs of a heat-related illness. So if somebody's working and they're feeling dizzy, they, they understand the risk there, that's where the risk comes in. And then the rights is that there are, you know, cer, there are certain, you know, it varies from organization to organization, but there are certain rules in workplaces of, of a right to a water break or, you know, a certain break after a certain period of time and when temperatures reach a certain threshold.
Okay. Okay.
Anything to add there, Brad?
Any other questions, so they can move on, move forward? Is that it? Okay. Thank you.
Sure. The, so I was going to bring it up to sort of where, where these aligns with work that's happening across King County and, and sort of our next steps where you all might have opportunities to take part in future steps as well. We're kind of like, the project sort of just ended that, that, that 15-person group phase, but we're still writing the final report, so we wanted to come to you early to get feedback and new ideas, sure, and, and then we can also fold that into the next steps of the process. So we wanted to meet, have a more midpoint interaction early on with the, and then we'll also come back, we can come back to you later with the final report. But a lot of these align with what you see in the middle is the extreme heat mitigation strategy. There's already, I think it's 20 actions that are outlined in the strategy that, that these align with, but like I said, they have this other story to it. So we've talked about maybe this is an addendum to the strategy, but it really adds a local and community-based flavor to it that, that you wouldn't get from not doing this deep process. So it, it expands on it. There's also, some of these actions appear, and what's just being released now is the 2025 Strategic Climate Action Plan. It's in a sort of tentative phase, it hasn't been approved by county council yet, and so this is a first glimpse of it, but, but some of those actions are in there for moving them forward. And then public health has also stood behind climate as a priority, where climate is featured as a priority in the strategic plan to focus on bringing more data, more communications materials, and I'll give you some examples of that, but health education, and then also more resources, like, right now, we're distributing air filters to airport communities, which helps with wildfire smoke as well as increased air pollution. So what's the products that are coming out of this project are a report to the funders, but along with that report is really a summary of Auburn and the heat risk here and the solutions that you came up with. I, I think a lot of this can be cut and pasted into, like, grant applications from the city or from the community-based organizations, and so I think it's going to be really helpful to, to you all. One of the other pieces is the storytelling. We were told, the folks at the last meeting said they want climate stories, they want comic books, and, and actually, we are almost done with a comic narrative coming out from the priority of, of talking about violence and heat. There's actually data that shows that violence increases with the extreme heat, and, and so there's a domestic, domestic violence survivor story in a comic form that's, that's going to be released in probably July or maybe later this month. We're also going to put these results out there nationally as an example of how to do this work well, so there will be some technical manuscripts and journal articles. And then, and then this is like step, or stop one on the roadshow, we'll also talk to various interested parties. We've been talking to Skip and some other subregional meetings. So you'll see, like, there's one of our Stay Safe in the Heat comics, and so we can start distributing heat education now, and we're already making those plans with, with organizations in Auburn. We'll share our findings at those subregional meetings, we'll talk to other communities that are experiencing similar things, like Kent, Tuck, Willa, and Renton, and share these results to see how generalizable they are. We have plans to write up policy briefs. Also, those 15 people that sat in this room for Saturdays for the past year are amazing, and, and those are your community members, and I think they're anxious to do more work. So if you have, if you have things you want them to work on, they're, they're experts in this right now, and so that might be an opportunity for you. And then that grant writing, we've already written a couple of, of early grants with the city of Auburn, and so we're happy to continue to support that, particularly with the materials we're producing. One of those subregional community things is, or meetings is, do you know about this K4C is the King County Cities Climate Collaboration? And so those are the current members, and I know Auburn is discussing whether, or how to sign on, or where that fits into those conversations, but that's this type of venue we would go to, is to present out these results and, and start to see how these work, how these are comparable to other communities. I think that's it. That's our last slide, so if you have additional questions.
Counsel. Counselmember Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I've got, I love what you're putting out. I am concerned a little bit on the messaging out to our underserved populations, translations. How are you moving forward with that? And are you doing that for the top five languages, or how do you see that?
Thank you, counsel member. We actually are, for the domestic violence comic, we're translating into 12 languages.
Fantastic.
Yes, and really excited. We plan to print them, there will be a digital download copy. We've already had some conversations with some domestic violence organizations about distributing it, so I'm happy to distribute widely through the networks.
Fantastic. Thank you.
They are also in multiple media formats, so we also do a lot of community media where if there's newspapers or if there's Facebook pages, we can get into formats for them to be broadcasted out. Sometimes they're, like, read it on, on Spanish-speaking radio and these other media.
I'm just looking more towards, like, social media messaging. I know King County puts out a robust, especially when it comes to heat warnings and whatnot. I know it's shared amongst the different cities and on their social platforms. I just, I think personally, as a consumer of social media, I'd like to see more out of that, especially when the summer is supposed to be relatively hot, so just a suggestion. Thank you.
Could, when you distribute those domestic violence ones, are you putting them in the schools?
We don't yet have that partnership lined up, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you mind if I talk to the person that I distribute stuff for domestic violence?
Yeah.
Or I'll just send it there?
Yeah. And we're still very, right now, we're just sort of putting the wrapper around it to make sure that it's not just a story about domestic violence, but also has connections to the services and, but yeah, the dissemination plan is early enough that, that would help.
Okay. Counselwoman Kate.
Yeah, so I'm curious, with the partners that you worked with at the universities, do they have any predictions for when we'll be getting into kind of the wet bulb area? Because if I'm looking at the charts right now in the valleys for Auburn and Kent in particular, we're sitting at, you know, 96.7 degrees, adding another 5.5 on top of that is significant, right? You throw on humidity, you get a humid day plus those temperatures, and they're not necessarily survivable. So for folks who might be watching, can you give a little bit of context for, for what that future could look like without taking measures to address it?
Do you have an answer?
I don't have an answer, a technical answer when it comes to wet bulb, to be fair. We do, that's the, you know, the, the 5.5 is, is the regional predicted average, but you, you can.
Surmise?
Yeah. You can assume that the temperatures will still be going up in the valley, and those will, that will have impacts, but I do not know the answer to your question.
Okay. I wasn't sure if they had any modeling that they had done as far as, like, this area will hit that risk point at this, you know, this forecasted year or that forecasted year. So the wet bulb temperature is a data point that scientists sometimes use when they're doing that comparison, or rather overlay of hot temperatures plus humidity, because at a certain point, even healthy people have an inability to physically cool themselves. And so in places that we read about around the world where they have hit those temperatures, they have had significant deaths that have already happened and occurred when they get into that, that zone, right? And so I think that in our area, it's just something that, one of the reasons I care very deeply about it is because, as you mentioned at the beginning of the session, you know, the temperate history of the Pacific Northwest is one that when we built out our buildings and our homes and our houses and our infrastructure, we didn't have that on the forecast, right? And so we're not structurally set up to be able to address it. So I'm very interested in the things that I'm reading about in other countries where they've been able to actually bring temperatures down significantly. Medellin, Colombia is one, for example, where they've been able to lower temperatures using a green corridor program by, I think, two to three degrees, which it might not sound like a lot, but when you consider a whole summer being two to three degrees cooler versus a single day, that is a very substantial shift against a target that is steadily rising. So I'm hoping that the work that we can do can move even beyond the suggestions of the CHAMP's group. I think what they've provided is a fantastic starting point, but I'm hoping we can get into a position where we could maybe be using drones to look at what are the rooftops in Auburn that are dark, or what are the areas where we've got kind of, you know, vast spreads of concrete, if we need to start breaking that into different types of materials, and how can we incorporate it into our planning and development so that way, when new parking lots and things are going in, we're ensuring that there's shade across those to make sure that we're not just building a worse heat sink going into the future? Because I think we want development, we want, you know, We want, you know, more growth within the community. But there's a challenge with that growth. And so if we don't have appropriate planning on the mitigation features that can make it less impactful, then we have troubles.
Councilmember Amir.
I have a comment and question. I was part of the air study quality last year. I was a member of it. It was so surprised because when I started my, I forget the name, the filter, the reader, like on 4th of July, how much turn to be read for two days? That's second. And I'm one of the people, the heat affect me so much comparing than any other, even if I'm from a grown Africa. I know I'm hearing council members that we need to think about stuff. I don't think we can be like Dubai where they will have the bus station have their air air conditioning. Because even here, I think the weather still get different than Africa. Because the heat, it's usually compared and most of the people think it's because here in Washington, the heat start after four and the temperature get higher, higher till almost 10 o'clock comparing than any other country where it's around four, six, it cold down. I don't think we can solve it with all the ozone and stuff, but I'm looking for. So thank you.
Councilmember, did you want to answer to that?
I was saying thank you.
Okay.
So I guess that's my question is that I'm just curious on like the the legal, how are we making sure that air conditioning is just legal? Or that is mandated? Because I come from Reno, Nevada, and it's 100-plus degrees every year. I moved here and I didn't know that central air conditioning wasn't just a standard thing, human right. And so, you know, Phoenix or Arizona, Nevada, they're surviving in this heat because they have air-conditioned units, whether it's low-income areas or not. It's just a standard way of living. And so I I know that with Washington, the last several years, they've started with certain, you know, apartment buildings, whether it's seven feet or higher, it's mandated that they have to have central air conditioning. So I guess it's always going to be hot outside. But I'm just curious as to what are the the what are we doing to make sure that just as long as you have air conditioning, that you can be indoor and be safe? And so I guess I'm just confused because I didn't hear a lot about that.
That's a solution that shows up in the extreme heat mitigation strategy that King County has. And that's one, you know, there was a heat pump was proposed in that, which is a cooling solution that also can, you know, be helpful in the winter as well. The the heat pump solution didn't make it to the top prioritized solutions. I think there is the concern for affordability is why. But I think that's one of the reasons that you see energy assistance so high is because there's a lot of people who have air conditioning, but they don't have the resources to use it. They're worried about their energy bill. And so if you have people with cooling infrastructure in their housing and they have assistance to make sure they can use it, that's that's why that was the second prioritized solution. And I think there's the affordability concern is there.
Okay.
Did you have things to add to that?
In the longer range of things, there are some communities that have set that have policies and it's written in codes. And and so you cited maybe a code that has like more than seven stories. I'm not familiar with that one, but it's like, that sounds good. There's other like maximum temperatures that they're setting. And but and I think it just comes down to that affordability. So we also have programs that are looking to retrofit older housing that is in in that code realm. And and how do we get heat pumps, which can be like easily 18, starting at like 18,000 to like, you know, like 50,000? And how do we get that affordable into our lower-income homes? So there are some programs that are real in King County. And and then but then the other solutions like portable air conditions and such when you run this in the winter, in the summer, rather, it's, you know, you can raise your electric bill. Like when I did it in my apartment in downtown Seattle, my electric bill went up over $150 for that month. Just that was the increase.
So for us, it's affordability of the monthly power bill, but also then the infrastructure of having air conditioning as an option in the unit.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilwoman Ballen.
Yeah, and I think Bradley.
Brad Bradley.
Hit it on the head, which is from, you know, what's the scope of council to do? I think there'd be working with staff to identify, are there, you know, policies that we would want to put into place that would allow, you know, existing infrastructure to maybe be grandfathered in over time? Or work with our community partners like PSE or King County to see if we could get grant funding to have programs where people could do some of that retrofitting? And so from a strategy standpoint, there's a lot of options. It's more a matter of which is going to feel like the right direction to get in and get started to address it. And then there are some things that can also do mitigation. As I mentioned earlier, like if you have, you know, like we have a fair bit of warehousing and structures throughout the city. But even just painting the roof of it white is reflective and helps reduce the amount of heat that's being trapped within the cement, if you will. And likewise, planting programs, while it sounds a little bit trivial, the earlier you start, you can build up green corridors. And those not only are providing shade to offset the hotter areas, but they also support evaporative cooling, which is kind of a secondary aspect of planting. And so when we think about, you know, when we look at the map and see what are the neighborhoods that are most affected, which we should be able to get with the data that's already been produced via U-Dub in King County, we could actually target within Auburn which neighborhoods we might want to do like a planting program and either have residents opt into it or identify which parcels are city-owned that we could just plant into ourselves. So I think we have a lot that we could do.
Yeah, I agree. I I was going to ask the questions. Did you folks within the conversations in the room, did you find out how many gardens are planted in Auburn? Not. Do we happen to know any of that, Ingrid?
Are you talking about community gardens specifically? I mean, there were a couple of locations that I'm aware of, but I don't know that there is an overall master list of community gardens, especially since many of them are run by private entities and not by the city. So I don't know that we have a list.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, Council? Thank you. Appreciate everything brought to us. And my last question is, you said you're going to take the 2025 Strategy Climate Action Plan to King County Council. When are you planning on doing that or have you done that yet?
So it's been transmitted. And so it's sitting in front of King County Council right now for review. And then there's several review opportunities or meetings with staff. And so it's sort of going in that. So I'm trying to remember what the latest update was, but I think it gets, we're hoping it will get reviewed over the next few months. And the standard trajectory would have it probably probably approved, you know, in fall. Exactly sure.
And then I remember a couple of years ago, there was a a program where you gave fans, over 300 box fans. I helped distribute those, and those were great. The community were all there, and I wish we would have had more because families were really looking for those. Are you ever going to bring that back?
Yeah, I so it's about resourcing that. And and the state had been giving some consistent fans resources, the state and Puget Sound Clean Air Agency and some other partners. And a lot of this between installing like, like, there's two types of fans. It sounds like you were installing these box fans that you can put a HEPA filter on top of, and you can 3D print clips to hold them together. And that becomes this sort of lower cost and when they're supplied, no-cost solution. And then there's also HEPA filter fans that are a little bit more expensive. And they they and both of them do two things. They do infection control. And so we did it a lot in COVID to put them in the room to reduce the the spread of of COVID. But it also can help with the wildfire smoke. So between those two, we have been giving out tens of thousands of fans that were resourced, and those resources just aren't there anymore. We did just get resourced to distribute 6,000 fans or HEPA filters. And we did that between January and June, and we're just wrapping that up now. So we have the ability to do that. We do it through community-based organizations. So it gets it it gets it out to the with trusted education along with it. We train them in the health education.
Okay, well, I know that you gave it to the Blue Ribbon Committee because Pat Bailey and I and Councilmember Baggett, we distributed them to a lot of low-income families. And there was a lot more warnings and more. So we, if you get that again, bring it to the Blue Ribbon.
Yeah, because I'm hearing we have a well-paid path here. And that's typically how we like to do that.
Mayor Backus has had their hand up for a while.
Oh, I did see that. Council, Mayor Backus.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to say thank you to King County for the work that they did. And also Pat Bailey and Dana Hinman, who took on the effort representing the city of Auburn. And it was just an incredible job that was done. And the enthusiasm at the beginning of the program, I think, was equaled and surpassed at the end of the program when they could see the results of their work. So thank you very much for another great partnership with King County. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor Backus.
Thank you, Mayor Backus.
And I believe you set this up very well, too. It was really that Healthy Auburn for Life Committee and Pat Bailey, who helped who helped bring the project forward to Auburn. And we couldn't have done it without that tremendous support from.
Well, thank you for being a great partner to work with and continue to work with. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Council chair. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next on the agenda will be a council discussion for the 2024 School Speed Zone Camera Report and Ordinance Number 6983.
Hello.
So good evening, for the record, your Health Public Works Director. With me tonight is Jacob Sweeting, our Assistant Director and City Engineer. So tonight, we're going to start talking to you about our photo enforcement program. We're going to do two things tonight. The first one is to review our 2024 report for how our school zone enforcement went over 2024. And then we're also going to talk to you about some proposed changes to our code related to photo enforcement that we need to do in order to align that code with current state legislation and some recent changes that were made in that legislation. So with that, Jacob.
All right, well, thank you. Good evening. So I first want to start with an overview of the objectives of our Automated Traffic Safety Camera Enforcement Program as we have it today. The goal is to improve safety, and that is specifically to reduce the likelihood of crashes that cause serious injuries or fatalities on our roadways. We also, with our program, seek a program that is cost-neutral, that is, that the program itself does not present a burden to our general fund. This illustration that shows the different people here shows that how just reducing vehicle speeds just a bit increases the chance of survival if you are struck by a vehicle. As an example, if a pedestrian is struck by a vehicle going 30 miles per hour, there's about a 45% chance that that pedestrian will either get seriously injured or will not survive. If you can drop that down to 20 miles per hour, that risk drops to just about 5%. So slowing the cars down matters, and that is the objective of these cameras. So looking at our current program and where we started back in February of 2022, we studied 28 different school speed zones for two days. We placed different detection cables across the roadway. And the data that we got in those school zones was somewhat troublesome in the sense that we there's a lot of people speeding. In each of those school zones, the ranges varied from 7% to 45%. Of all cars were significantly speeding over the 20 20 miles per hour while children were present or while the while those beacons were flashing. That was in that two-day period, over 5,000 vehicles were speeding through our school zones. So then in March, the month after, we came to City Council and we talked about ways that we can address those issues. And we brought a resolution to adopt the school zone speed, the school speed zone photo enforcement program through an agreement with Ver mobility, who's our current vendor serving, providing the services for those cameras. In August of that year, we came back with Ordinance 686H, which modified ACC Auburn City Code 1042 to address the photo enforcement and update it per then the recent RCWs that were in effect at the time. So the first cameras were installed of May of 2023. We started with five cameras installed with May in May. And then in September of that year, another seven cameras were installed for a total of 12 cameras that were in effect and are still in effect today. So those 12 cameras are actually in eight different school zones. So some of the school zones have actually two cameras. In selecting the different schools, school zones where we would place these, we not only looked at where we had some of the most rates, the highest rates of noncompliance, so the most vehicles that were speeding, but we also tried to spread out the camera placement geographically to have good spacing and to be balanced throughout the city. And then also demographically, we looked at some equity components to make sure that we weren't putting more in one area versus another. So you can see on the map here, we have two cameras up on the West Hill, two cameras up on Lee Hill. We have three cameras in Lakeland Hills and then another five cameras down in the valley. All right, so this this graph shows how the cameras have been performing, how they have been affecting driver behavior. On the far left is where we started back when we did the study. It actually says January of '23. That should say '22, but it would have created a pretty big distortion between the time we took the study and got the first cameras in place. But what it does show is that we started out of those different eight, eight school zones, for those school zones where we replaced the cameras, the starting out noncompliance rate was about 28%. That means, you know, over one out of four cars were significantly speeding over 20 miles per hour during the active times. Then, as we move through time, we see in May, when the cameras were installed, a month before that, there was a warning period. So we see things dropping rather quickly and continue to drop until we get to today, where the compliance rates, well, actually today, this is December 2024, so this is year end. The rates are about the same today. But then that one out of four cars drops to about just under 2%, which is one out of 50 cars. So cameras are working to slow people down. And that objective of the program is shown to be met. Some more specifics on what the statistics look like for how the current program is going. In 2024, there were just over 23,000 citations issued compared to in '23, there was just over 14,000. So it sounds like, well, more people are speeding. That actually is a factor of starting out with just five cameras and then having 12 cameras later in the year in '23. So we didn't have a full program in effect all of '23. Whereas in '24, we've had the 12 cameras active throughout most of the the school period. 2023 also had two months of warning periods, one for the first set of cameras and one for the second set of cameras. So 2024 represents probably more of a fully operational system.
And I would just add to that, for 2023, it basically represents about five months of enforcement as opposed to the normal 10-month school year.
Their remittance rate, so that is how many people are actually paying their infractions. In 2024 was about 57%. In 2023, that was a little bit lower, it was about 43%. Overall, that's a very, it's a decent percentage. It means that people are, you know, paying their tickets for the most part. Some of these might still be going through collections or going through some other court process. Then, let's see, if we look at the actual amounts that we've collected from these citations, so in 2024, there was 2.63 billion that was collected in the citation for the citations issued. Our program costs approximated to be about 880,000. Part of that issued. Our program costs approximated to be about 880,000. Part of that includes court costs, which we don't have an exact number on. We based our current estimates based on the '23 numbers. '24 is still out. We do suspect that the court costs have gone up. More citations mean more processing, as well as some other just general increases in those court costs. And then of the revenue collected in 2024, about 1.41, that should say 1.41 million, not 1.41K. About 1.41 million was, has actually been budgeted in 2025 and 2026 in various traffic programs that help support safety and maintenance of our roadways. The actual annual report that is actually is, it includes a lot less information than this, but it gives a number of citations issued for each camera and the number of crashes that have occurred in each one of the school zones where there are cameras. That report is required to be published annually by the city. We usually don't get all of the data for the previous year until about May. So, sometime towards the end of May or June, we end up getting that, that report prepared and posted on our webpage. You've already heard about the number of citations. Generally speaking, the number of crashes that are happening in the school zones has notched down a bit. There were 14 crashes in those school zones in 2023, and in 2024, there were 13 crashes. So, we went from 14 to 13. Overall, it's a low number, but it's nice to see it ticking downwards a little bit. Of note, a higher percentage of those crashes are actually happening in one of the school zone locations, and that's over on 132nd on Lee Hill, near Arthur Jacobson and the high school up there. But even those crashes have reduced from nine in 2023 to five in 2024. So, we see some positive movement. Another, another thing that we're watching is as the compliance rates improve and less tickets are being issued, we still want to make sure that we are maintaining a program that is cost-neutral and is not going to cost our general fund or burden our general fund with the cost. This graph looks similar to the compliance graph, but this actually shows the amounts collected over time on a month-by-month basis for the program. And you'll see, as you move through time, that there are some drops, and those are the summer periods where we're not enforcing. So, typically, you don't enforce during the summer, and then after the summer, you start enforcing again, and there's an up, there's an increased number of infractions right at the beginning of the school year, as people are reminded that they need to be slowing down. So, we see some uptick in the, in the collections, and then it kind of varies. Overall, though, it's a downward trend. We do see it starting to stabilize at a point, which still reflects a cost, at least a cost-neutral program that covers our costs of the program.
Do you want questions in between or at the end?
I think at any time is fine.
Anytime? Okay. I have a question then. When are the lights supposed to be blinking and when are they supposed to be off? And when they're off, can you go at the regular speed limit? Because I know I always slow down, even if the lights are off, because I'm kind of confused. I've already gotten a ticket when the lights were supposed to be off. It was after four o'clock, and I got a ticket. There was no schools. And so, I would just like to know, to clear that up.
Okay, a few layers there. One, always slow down. That's my personal.
I agree.
Remember that first slide? Slower speeds, even the same lights. But outside of that. And then tickets can be issued at any time by a police officer. The police officers are still out there. So, they're still doing enforcement. So, just even though, you know, they're not flashing the signs, you know, they're still.
No, this was one of the camera.
Right. So, so the beacons, so all of our locations that have cameras have flashing beacons, but not every school zone has the flashing beacon. Some school zones are posted to be when children are present. So, you just have to be observant of when the children are present and then follow the speed limit accordingly. But if there is a camera system there, then it has a beacon. The beacons are generally set to be a half hour before an after-school starts or lets out. There is also some schools that have a lunch period release time. So, some of the elementary schools have a program that does release around the noon period. So, there is a 15-minute period before and after when those are also set to be running on that. So, we also do try to keep up with the winter or the, the snow days where they close the school unexpectedly. And then we, you know, we get the phone calls like everyone else does, and then we try to get out and adjust the beacons and go out and work with the camera vendor. Even if those are still, even if the camera's flashing and the beacons are going and the school wasn't running, we go back and anything issued during that time period that shouldn't have been gets filtered out.
Okay.
So, there's quite a robust system of multiple layers that, because we get the phone calls. Hey, I went by and there's no, you know, the beacon was flashing, you know, I think I got a ticket. Like, nope. Did you get it? Call back. Because it filters, the program, it filters it out if there wasn't actually school in session. So.
Okay. No, I just slowed down, but when I got that ticket and it was after four o'clock.
Sure.
I questioned it, and so I've been waiting to ask somebody. I paid the ticket. It wasn't very kind to me, but that's okay.
Well, thank you for paying the ticket.
Yes, I did. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah. Each of the notice of infractions does have instructions on what to do. You can go online. You can check the video. You can check the photo. You can get more information. You can call us. You can call PD. You can call the courts. And we take those calls and we work through it.
Okay. Any questions?
Just, just one comment, just for the community.
Councilmember Sturt.
Sorry. One comment that I learned in my orientation, thank you, Director Gao, is that when you do get, if you do get a camera notice in your mail, it has been reviewed by a human. So, you know, it has most likely been seen that your car was speeding.
Yeah, so every, every infraction.
Or verified. It doesn't mean that it's 100% accurate. However, that was a great learning for me, that, you know, we do know that that has been verified by a human. And so, you can follow up on it. You have your rights. However, pay your ticket.
And I would probably iterate on that, that it's actually a police officer who has actually reviewed that ticket and determined that that ticket should be issued.
Yes.
And I learned that when I went to court, but it was anyways. So, that's good information that you just shared. So, thank you. Council? No? Okay.
All right.
That's it?
Nope. Well, continue. So, first, I'll start with updated state law. So, I referenced before that we already updated the ordinance about our photo enforcement previously. Well, now the state law has been updated. So, in 2024, actually, March of 2024, last year, House Bill 2384 was passed, and that revised RCW changes the parameters about automated safety, traffic safety enforcement, and actually allows, expands the allowance of the use of the cameras to be not just in school zones, but also in areas outside of school zones. There are conditions associated with this, and the RCW has a lot of different layers to it. So, I'll give you some of the highlights. But the agencies, they can put cameras in to enforce speed limits outside of school zones, limited to one camera per 10,000 residents. So, for City of Auburn with, you know, approaching around 90,000, that'd be at the upper limit, we'd need nine cameras, the absolute state allowed maximum. I'm not saying tonight that that's what we're proposing, because that's not what we're proposing. The RCW has very specific conditions about where the cameras can be placed. They can't be placed anywhere we want or anywhere we think that they would produce the most tickets. That's not how it works. They have to first be at a location where we've identified that speeding is a cause or increases the risk of crashes. And so, we have to have data that correlates the two with each other. We have to perform an analysis that looks at different factors, and one of those factors is equity. And are there alternatives besides the camera enforcement that can be done to help address the safety concerns or help slow down the vehicles? For the equity analysis, we need to look at livability, accessibility, economics, education, environment, and environmental health, and how all those things relate to camera enforcement. We're still working through that. But one example might be, okay, if we put a camera on this street, is it going to cause the traffic to divert to another street where there might be unintended consequences of having speeding traffic move from one street to another? So, those are the things that are needing to be looked at with this analysis per the new laws. The analysis has to, like I said, look at the rates of vehicle speeding, the rates of crashes. We also need to look and analyze, are there challenges in standard traditional enforcement as police officers? Are these in locations where they could be enforced with a police officer, or is it a challenge to enforce in these locations? The legislature, we're looking for those locations where it's, it's more difficult to enforce with just a police officer out there, for whatever reason it may be. And then, the analysis needs to show that actual physical traffic calming measures, like the traffic circles or chicanes or some of these other things, just wouldn't be feasible or would, would not be effective in slowing down the vehicles. Or if they were, something like a roundabout, and it's just not cost feasible to do it now, the cameras might be seen as more of a temporary measure. But all those different factors have to be documented through an analysis and then eventually adopted by the legislative body, the city council, to allow for the, each camera, camera location to go into place. The new, the, the House bill also included some rules regarding the revenues that come from these general speed enforcement cameras. So, basically, we, after, if we put in these cameras after the fourth year of installation, 25% of the net revenue, so that'd be revenue over and above beyond our costs, we would have to provide to the state. The state then uses that for non-mortarized pedestrian safety programs. That's something that's not in place today. So, that requirement does not impact our current program for our school zone safety cameras. And in fact, it allows us to actually, if we wanted to, we could install one more school zone camera without being subject to that revenue sharing that is referenced. As you saw in the previous slides, some of the ways that we have budgeted our revenue so far is putting it back into our system anyways. This revenue sharing means some of that money that we invest back into our own systems would have to be shared with the state for them to, to award how they see fit.
And probably just as a reminder for council, so when we first implemented the school safety zone cameras, part of the discussion with council at that time was, if there are excess revenues, that would be a budget decision at each of the budget cycles as to what are we doing with those excess revenues that the city may have for that funding. That's above and beyond the cost of the program. So, we're not getting ahead of ourselves and programming that money for programs that maybe as, as that revenue continues to decline, which is what we want to see. We want to see that declining because that means less speeding and less citations being issued. But when, when, when do we hit that? And what do we do with those funds until we hit that point?
Okay. And then.
Can I ask a short question? You're talking about maybe the 10 cameras. I know we're not going to do that. But in some of those intersections, we used to have the cameras before.
So, you're talking about the red light photo enforcement? So.
Were we looking into doing that then?
The RCWs do allow the red light photo enforcement. We have not looked at the red light photo enforcement since the city stopped doing that in 2014.
14, yeah.
So, it hasn't been on our radar for us to look at doing those again. Part of the difficulties that I believe council indicated with the last program and the reason that they voted to not continue it was the difficulty in showing the effectiveness of those red light photo enforcement cameras and the frustration of residents with the signage that was across the city for, for that system. So, it certainly is something that we can look at. All of this, just keep in mind that it's still a resource impact, especially for our police officers. So, when we do have to do that review of those tickets, it does take time from the police officers to process each of those tickets. And so, we want to be, we want to be slow in our implementation of what we put out there to make sure that what we're doing is, one, effective, and, two, not overburdening the staff that need to do the work.
Thank you. Because I've had several people right there on M Street and Auburn Way South where there's been several collisions, if we have even thought about bringing those back. So, that's why I'm asking. Okay, thank you.
All right. And just to add to that, another challenge associated with red light cameras, and you brought up Auburn Way South and M Street. Some of the more horrific crashes that have occurred there have actually been related to DUI and very excessive speeds and things like stolen vehicles. And I think we've seen that something like a red light camera is not going to slow those vehicles down.
Okay.
So, that's another challenge.
All right. Thank you.
Let's see. Moving on to Ordinance 693. So, this ordinance, this draft ordinance is included in your packet, and this would update ACC 1042 yet again to align it with the most recent updates to the RCW that we were just talking about. It updates the chapter title. So, I think we currently call it photo enforcement. The RCW refers it to Automated Traffic Safety Cameras, Automatic Traffic Safety Cameras, I believe. So, it's aligning some of the terms, aligning some of the definitions. It's also adding some of the requirements. These requirements are, as an example, a requirement to have signage in advance of where you have a camera placed. We already have that. It's already a requirement of the ME TCD. The RCW just specifically requires any agency that's going to have the cameras to put that into their code. So, we're putting things in our code that we already do. It's just required to actually sit in our code. We also, in the proposed code, set what the infraction would be for an infraction issued by a camera that's enforcing outside of a school zone, which we don't currently have that there. It's going to be set at $145, which is the limit that is in the RCW. And it would still maintain these school zone infractions that being at $200, which is actually less than the limit. The limit in the RCW allows that to be up to double what we charge in the general speed zone. So, it could be up to, up to $290. But we're proposing to keep it at the $200 where it is today. And then, it also, some of the wording in the city code has proposed change to be more general, to allow for that general speed enforcement outside of the school zones as well. So, next steps. So, just a reminder that last year, I believe it was last year, towards the end of the year, beginning of this year, we, the city council adopted the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. The Safety Action Plan identified seven, seven different corridors throughout the city where we call them the safety emphasis corridors. These are where we have a higher number of crashes occurring, and not just regular crashes, crashes that are hurting people and killing people. And all seven of those corridors identified speeding as one of the driving factors that are causing those crashes. So, that's one piece of this puzzle, one part of the analysis that's already been started for us. So, we're looking at that as we're preparing the analysis. Also, the city council adopted the 2526 budget. In the budget, the program for the expanded photo enforcement program was funded at a level of three cameras. So, not the 10, or the nine that we would be allowed, but the three cameras. So, we have been working on a study, the analysis underway for potentially three locations for general speed cameras. The analysis is not ready to talk about tonight. We'll be coming back next month, on July 14. We'll come back and we will present to you what we found in our study, the different locations that we looked at for placement of these cameras. And that will come with a draft resolution to establish those three locations as the locations where we start this, this program. July 21st would be two things. One, the Ordinance 6983 that we're talking about tonight, the updated code, and then also a resolution to adopt those first three locations.
Councilwoman Ballone.
Sure. So, thank you for the presentation and a huge kudos to your team. Going from a noncompliance for people speeding in school zones at, you know, one out of every four cars to one out of every 50 is an incredible turnaround in a short period of time. And so, you know, if I had kids in the Auburn School District, I would be really grateful because that would be one less thing to worry about in a world where it seems like there's more stuff to worry about every day. So, that's, I see that as being very successful. So, that's great news. And I have a question with the approach for moving forward in the non-school zone areas with the up to nine, you know, potential sites that we could have. When we have the analysis and when we submit that, it sounded like that needed to be approved by the state as well. Is that correct from the process standpoint?
No, the state just requires. No, the state just requires that the analysis is prepared and then the our governing party, so you, the city council, has to.
Okay. There are very specific criteria in the RCW that that analysis has to include. And so that's what we're currently working on, is putting all of that analysis together to then come back and talk with the council on the 14th about what we found for the locations.
Second part to that. When we cite those first three, if we follow up like we did in the first round with the school cameras, kind of a first set and then additional sets into the future, is there ever a point farther down the road where we would relocate any that we have established? Does that ever happen in these types of programs? Where we would take one and say it's successful or we're not getting the results we expect? Do we ever move it once we place it?
Yeah, we've talked about that, we've contemplated that in our contract with our vendor. So in our initial contract, we did have, and we still do have the opportunity to make, I think it's one adjustment or two adjustments if we need to, if something just wasn't working or if the need shifted. We also discussed that it would be challenging to see such success and then decide to move a camera. Because once again, as a parent, if you were a parent, if the kid's going to that school, you'd say, well, wait a minute.
No, I think the school ones, I want to keep those right where they are. I was thinking more for the future, for the general ones.
Yeah, and I think a driving force behind that is really what is happening with that infraction level? And are we get, are we still able to pay for the system with what we're generating? Are we now dropping down so low that we cannot pay for the system with what we're generating? That's the type of situation where we might then look at, is there another location that that camera would be more effective? Should we move it? Should we add another one into that system? Since we're only proposing to do three out of the nine that we're allowed to do under state law, we have some options.
Okay.
Great, good.
In the future, thank you.
Councilmember Trey Stevens.
Thank you, Chair. Jacob Ingram, thank you again for your presentation tonight. Jacob, you answered my question, I was more concerned of more along the lines of driver behavior, whether or not they are bypassing and using other streets to avoid the camera because they've been dinged once before. I know that does happen quite a bit. But I also want to give kudos to you, especially when it comes to the studies that our traffic engineers do, because that is a long, extensive process. And there is theory and a lot of research that goes into what you do and the placement of those cameras. I guess my question would be around this with the, you had said you're not seeing the patterns of driver behavior by diverting off. Are we taking that into consideration with where the placement would be for some of these other cameras? Are we thinking, oh, well, maybe there's a possibility they are diverting off here and we'll stick a camera here?
It is part of the analysis that we're looking at to say, well, if we did place a camera here, would that create the potential for diverting traffic?
Sure.
Is there another parallel street that they would go to? For instance, if we put, I don't know, if we put a camera on some, a major arterial here, is there another parallel street that might be through neighborhoods that now speeding traffic is going to cut through the neighborhoods? And then, if even if that is the case, is there something that maybe we could do on that street to address that issue?
Yeah.
So we've had, what we've done now in some of the school areas that either didn't get a camera or maybe are adjacent to where there's a camera, we've gone back and now we're looking at actual physical traffic calming measures like speed cushions or traffic circles and putting some of those in to help address that potential issue as well. So yes, we're looking at that.
Awesome, thank you.
And I think that's really smart of you to do that because, yeah, I have seen people speeding and then they turn, they see the lights, the cameras, and they go down the the smaller streets. And you already put those, because I see them put their lights on to slow down. So, yeah, that's really good to know. Counsel, anymore? No questions? Thank you, great report. And also, as Councilwoman Taylor said, thank you for all the hard work you folks are doing in saving our city. Thank you. Okay. Now I am going to turn it over to Chair Baldwin.
Do we want a break before we?
Yeah, we can take a five-minute break. And then you can come over here, or do you want to stay for your?
That's good.
That's right, I apologize.
Of course.
Five-minute break at 6:50, right? Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay.
I gotta get my back in, just one second.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And Councilwoman Kate Baldwin is with the Rules and Procedures.
Sure.
Chair. She'll be, she'll be, there we go.
All right. Okay, welcome, everybody. We are back for round two of going through the first draft, I guess now multiversion draft. But at least the first presentation of what the committee had put together for council and to continue working through the items that had been identified. And so in our last session, we had been covering some of the major topic areas. So what we had talked about previously is just our quick recap that when the committee had met, it was myself as chair, Councilmember Clinton Taylor, and then Deputy Mayor Cheryl Rakes informing that committee for this year's cycle. Our our approach was to solicit information from all members of council, go through, evaluate the outcome with staff, which included our city clerk as well as our city attorney, and then work to to incorporate those recommendations as best we could. And so what we had said before as our guiding path for this was that we wanted to have the ability to sorry, it's been a long day. We wanted to make sure that what we put in as far as updates in the cycle were going to not create more work for staff. We wanted to make sure everything was legal and we wanted to make sure that we served the community. And so with that, that is what we put together for that draft. Now, in going through, we did have a couple of major themes that we had talked about in our last session. We had updated the document to reflect that references to the deputy mayor and interim deputy mayor that had been a little bit wordy historically were tightened up. And so we made that one change, you'll see that updated in your document. The draft that you have that was included in the packet, and my my kudos to the clerk's office and to Sean, whoever put that update together for us, was able to accommodate the shift to have things that had been accepted by this group, I believe are shown within green and things that are still being evaluated as showing in blue, so that dark blue. So we can continue going through in our session. And so I think in the last go around, we had talked about whether it would make sense to start from the top and work our way through or if we wanted to start in key areas. And so I think we were making our way through, hitting some different areas. For today's session, I was just going to have a start from the beginning and go through, start to finish, because it seemed like there was a lot of questions and feedback and it might be easiest just to go through, start to finish. Councilmember Emmer, do you have a question?
I thought in last week, we talked about keeping the deputy mayor shall serve at the pressure of the council. I have not seen it being here, I've seen it removed, I thought we were reworded.
I didn't have that as a takeaway from before. That had been struck out in the draft version of the committee because it was seen as redundant with the fact that at any point, council can choose to elect a new deputy mayor.
I thought last meeting, we agreed to keep it. So I'm surprised that it's gone.
If it was notated as being gone, I think the consensus in the room was that it was seen as duplicative and unnecessary. In that section, we go to, it was section 12.
Can I?
Councilmember Cat Manuel.
I hope that tonight we don't rebuttal everything. I think we have spent a great deal of time on this. And we have had several people that were on the committee to begin with that changed this this book. That was 20 pages and now it's up to 40 some pages. And we still are having more stuff put into it. I think it's time that we were wasting, I feel we're wasting a lot of time on bickering back and forth on a little sentence that maybe the consensus wasn't there, that we did say several times it was redundant. And I think we need to move on, we need to go on, we've spent way too much on this book. And I just, that's how I feel. And we just, it's sad to have our staff here longer than what they should be here as well. Especially when this book is gone, like I said, it's 20 pages to 40 some pages and we're still adding more stuff to it. So anyways.
Thank you for your comment, Councilmember Cat Manuel, Councilmember Sturgis.
Question, just for clarification purposes. So when I'm looking at our agenda and our pre-work for tonight, the council rules of procedure dated October 7, 2024, that looks like it's 58 pages. And then the draft for tonight, it looks like we have a draft of 36 pages. Is that, am I looking at the right copies? So we're looking at shortening it by 18 pages?
I believe the difference between the two are that there's an appendix that covers after section 21, there is an appendix that you see in the original version or the the current version that's active that includes an appendix. And so I think that difference you're seeing in page count is due to the appendix not showing as those policies are city policies
Okay.
that would be updated separately from rules.
Thirty-seven pages to 36 pages tonight, so we've shortened it by one page.
There has been some, yes, at this point, we shortened it by one page, most likely with the striking of the multitude of references to interim deputy mayor.
Okay.
I have a question. Councilmember Emmer.
I know we submitted some comment about deputy mayor and I have not seen them or we have not talked about them. Is this planned to come back later to review the comment? Or the decision like, no, the ad hoc decided, guys, there is no need to review it? Because that's the message I'm getting, we are the ad hoc, we decided, then done. You guys, I'm asking.
So let me answer that and then, well, actually, Councilmember Taylor.
So, no, that's not how it happened. As the chair stated, we went through the entire document line by line.
Sorry.
Line by, literally, line by line. And we got feedback from not only the members who were a part of the ad hoc committee, but we leaned heavily in there, making sure that we stayed within our legal bounds as well with the legal team, with council.
Attorney.
Yes, city attorney and with the city clerk. And there were some things that I'm glad they were in the room because they were like, nope, can't say it that way, nope, can't put it down, yep, that's fine. And so as we moved through the document, and it took us about eight sessions, so we took in consideration everything that was there because there were comments that several council members made. And I'll be honest, I was one in the room saying, well, why do we have to look at all of this? Let's just highlight, we looked at every single thing you wrote. Every single thing you wrote, we looked at it. Every single thing you wrote was considered. And so every single thing could not be added to this document, or it would be 50, 60 some pages. And there was a lot of redundancy. And there was some overlap between things that people were saying, we're like, oh, they're saying the same thing. And so, no, it wasn't a decision where we went into a room and said, oh, this is what we want, never mind that, let's take that out. And so I'm I'm pretty, you know, satisfied with the work that came out of that committee because we met a lot of sessions, I mean, a lot of sessions. And so to to that comment, then no, it wasn't. It wasn't where we just went in and decided to just do whatever we wanted to do. And I think based on our last time together, when we were going through this document, where we stopped at was where you see the like, the green pieces in the document. So we'd already covered all of this anyway in the previous meeting. So I thought that we were going to jump in tonight where we stopped off at the previous week and continue this, which pretty much would put us over halfway through this document. That's what I thought. That's what I thought.
Thank you, member. Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. I appreciate your explanation of the process and the procedure. I think that was an accurate depiction. Councilmember Amer?
I just wanna put my voice. I understand we've done it last year, and comment go, but still, at the end, we still have to bring the comment to discuss it. I understand, we don't wanna do much work, that's fine, but we still, our opinion, we need to hear respond, like, why this not being add? Why, that's, I understand we may not get the majority vote, because sometimes people will vote without full understanding what's being presented, because they will refuse it depending on who put the comment. That's why I think we still, we go over what we have, but we still need to go to the comment we suggested.
Okay. I have a chart that I used, where I organized every request that came in, what the original version was, who requested it, what the outcome was from the committee, and what showed up in the draft, along with notes, which I'm referencing and guiding this session. It's something that I'm happy to provide if it's, would be beneficial. It does show there are places where there were overlap. It does show that some things were not planned for the cycle. It shows that some things were accepted, but with modifications. And the outcome that I saw across the board is that for all of the requests that were submitted, everybody got something, but not everybody got everything. And so we did our best to make sure that what we did and where we moved forward with the document would be accommodating to having a cohesive plan, building off of what areas we do have good stability within the document, and working to add additional clarity to any areas that we thought could be improved. So looking to do things like clean up areas that felt, that we either identified as duplicative or felt were redundant with other parts of the policies that were laid out more clearly. So per the question of, your initial question around the previous element of section 12, deputy mayor, 12 dot 1E, the deputy mayor shall serve at the pleasure of the council, that was struck with the recognition that in our document, we have clarity that allows us, in section 12, deputy mayor, 12 dot 1G, in the event that the council member selected as the deputy mayor is unable to perform the duties of the position of deputy mayor, or fails to act in accordance with the city council rules or procedure, the city council may, by a majority vote of the full council, remove deputy mayor from this position, in which case the council shall elect the next deputy mayor in accordance with section 12 to serve the remainder of the term. Now, that was what we had presented in the last round, because it is very clear that if the deputy mayor is not cutting it, that council by majority vote can remove that individual. Now, in the updated version that you see before you, that had been modified, the, what had been 12 dot 1, I believe it was E or G before, it's now showing as E, on page 20 of the document, 56 of your packet, which has been added, almost duplicative within the section itself, that in the event that the council member selected as deputy mayor is unable to perform the duties of the position of deputy mayor, or fails to act in accordance with the city council rules of procedure, and the addition, as made by the clerk at the last session, or a majority of the council wishes to reconsider the appointment of deputy mayor, the city council may, by a majority vote of the full city council, remove the deputy mayor from this position, et cetera. So the previous serve at the pleasure of council has been struck. We have articulated and re-articulated within the other element that point. And I'm seeing nods that that is sufficient from council. So I'm taking that current section, 12 dot 1E, as what we'll move forward with.
Nod.
I'm seeing nods from the members here, myself, and what we have presented was also what was acknowledged by Deputy Mayor Rake. She said everything that we have presented is committee, she's good with. So she would be a yes in this scenario as well. Councilmember Troutmanuel?
I just would like to clear one thing. This councilwoman mayor, I, I, you have said two statements that have made me feel very judging, and also wrong. Last meeting, you said that we have incompetent council members to serve as a deputy mayor. I don't know who makes that decision. We were voted by the people, and if they feel that we're competent enough to be their council member, that's very insulting to say. And then just now, you made another comment, that people don't understand what's being presented here to us.
Counsel should not direct speak to counsel. This is not the time, or, I'm sorry.
I am, I am just saying.
The point of order does stand. Remarks should be addressed to the chair. Councilmember Troutmanuel, thank you for your input. I'm gonna direct the whole body.
Thank you.
I would like us to stay focused on the materials. We have a lot to get through. And what we have on the item that was first brought up by Councilmember Amer was consensus to move forward with striking the deputy mayor shall serve at the pleasure of council in lieu of the fact that it is rendered within 12 dot 1E. Councilmember Sturgis, you had your hand up.
I, I would just like to say that in light of the personality, it feels like there's a lot of personal comments happening here. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter who's in the role. It's we're trying to, as the city of Auburn, decide what we want for the deputy mayor position for the city of Auburn. It does seem that, based on the, the changes here, that we are taking into account that, you know, for section E, that we do as a city council, at the end of the day, it was not the, the voters that voted in the deputy mayor, it's city council that votes in deputy mayor.
That is correct.
So I just want to, I wanna clarify that, because you just shared that we were voted in. And I, I wanna make sure that it's city council that votes in the deputy mayor. And so just, this rule meet is important, because it allows us the, the autonomy to be able to vote in who we feel is best suited for that role.
Thank you, Councilmember Sturgis. That is correct. The deputy mayor position is elected by the council members as a legislative body. Similar to how people choose, pardon me, similar to how Congress selects a speaker of the House, we select a deputy mayor within Auburn.
Yes. I was just addressing that, because Councilmember Troutmanuel had said that the people had voted in, and that was a clarification.
Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Sturgis, Councilmember Troutmanuel?
I would just like to clear that up. The reason why I said is because we're elected by the city. I didn't mention the deputy mayor role being elected. It's just two comments that have been said by some people in this room, and I don't feel that it should be, is out of, is out of context, who makes that decision, that a person?
Point of order.
It's...
Chair.
Point of order. We've already clarified this once. We do not need to repeat it again. We should just continue to move forward.
Councilmember Taylor, point of order is used when there's been something incorrectly happening per Rules and Procedures, not to interrupt other council members. Thank you. Councilmember Troutmanuel, please wrap up your comments.
I'm not gonna say anymore, but I just don't feel that we should be calling people, you know, incompetent, or, you know, that we don't understand what we're reading, because I think we're all capable of understanding what's being presented to us. So thank you.
Councilmember Troutmanuel, thank you for your comments. Reminder for everyone, as we continue through the remainder of the session, we do have rules for decorum, and I would appreciate if we can stay on topic for the materials presented to us. And comments that have happened within former meetings, former sessions, former years, as best we can, let's stay focused on the document at hand, and what it will do for us moving forward as the current body that we are. So, back on track to going through the document, I will have a start from the top on our draft. Councilmember Taylor?
So, we're going to start back at the very beginning and walk through the, where we took, so, I'm gonna make sure I'm understanding this. So we're gonna start at the beginning and walk back down to where we left off last week?
So Councilmember Taylor, great question. When we had met last week, we did not start at the very beginning. We had started in a different point within the document. So recognizing that within the updated version we've received from the clerk, we do still have some sections in blue that I believe we need to clear through. And so from a start fresh, new day, start at the top, I'm just gonna have a start through, and where we see blue, we'll try and get quick consensus. And then that also will help align a little bit better with the notes that I had from our committee sessions. So if Councilmember Amer has questions about things that either did not make it into the document or are outstanding, or likewise for others who had submitted suggestions, it'll be a lot easier to facilitate answering those questions as we go. Does that work? All right. Thank you. So we see at the top, as noted, the references to the interim deputy mayor have been removed throughout the document per consensus, and that was accepted with the update that we see later in section 12, that identifies that those references that had been inserted previously are understood as rules to the deputy mayor. We had no changes in section one. In section two, we get into our council meetings with 2 dot 1, regular meetings. And so there had been a recommendation submitted by Councilmember Amer with regards to how the document provides our seating guidance for our regular council meetings. The language as it was previously, the seating arrangement for the other members of council shall be determined and directed by the deputy mayor or interim deputy mayor, and decided once a year, has been modified. So the recommendation that we are putting forward was based on feedback that we did have from staff. And as a committee, we believe that this arrangement is able to provide consistency moving forward, and no matter who is in which position at any given time, it would follow a pattern where the seating arrangement for the council shall be by position number. So into that role where you're elected. So beginning with the lowest number from the right to left, as viewed from behind the dais, except for the position from the deputy mayor, which shall be provided as above, which is adjacent to the mayor. Councilmember Amer?
Thank you. I have a comment. First of all, it's our rules. We appreciate staff input, but still, our rules. That's fine, but if you think about, you remove that flexibility, especially sometimes you don't know whose will be coming. Some people, they have disability, they like to sit in different seats, some people will be too lefty. If we do it this way, flexibility will be, will not allow us for flexibility. That's, I have to point it. Because if we, if we be seating, some people, I seen it when I was in managing commissioner, it's different. That's...
Okay. So the committee had acknowledged a need to formalize the seating arrangement for council. Rather than relying on seniority or subjective or individual decisioning, the committee determined that the deputy mayor will remain to the mayor's immediate left, and the remaining seats would be filled based on the elected position of the council members. So the committee did hear the recommendation from staff, and as a committee and as council members, we felt that it was a solid recommendation. I'm seeing nods from, to others?
Are you looking for nods for our agreement, or?
I'm looking for hands, if there's other input. Otherwise, I'm looking for other feedback or consensus that would shift us away from what's being proposed here.
What's the appropriate way for me to make a comment?
So, to make a comment would be to raise your hand and be acknowledged.
I think that us, I completely respect everyone's opinion here. However, the way that we're seated on the dais, I don't think that makes a lot of impact on what the community members are expecting of us to try to make the city of Auburn a better place to live. So I think at the end of the day, if we need to go in order of one through six, or the fact that we're spending time worried about where we're sitting on the dais, that's a concern to me. As a community member paying taxes here, living here, I think that we need to figure out what's the easiest way to seat us all up there and get it, get it done.
Thank you, Councilmember Sturgis. I also agree, it's something that should be fairly simple and straightforward, which is why we thought the recommendation was appropriate. This provides guidance and sets structure, and provides us our procedure for how we, how we are arranged at the dais. Historically, there have been different ways that it has been handled, and so based off of the recommendation from Councilmember Amer, it came up as a discussion within committee, and this was the outcome. So we consider it to be accepted with modifications. Councilmember Amer?
Just for clarification, I know we spent time on it, but we, this is not for us, will be for even the future. Because the way we wanna do it, that's, are we planning to have it this way? That's why I point, we may have a people will be seat three or something, they cannot sit in where you, in the way we put it. That's why I said, the way we put it here will not allow for flexibility. That was the only comment. Or you have two lefty people, would be hard when two lefties sit together. And the way be written here will not allow us till next change.
Does it have to be so defined?
No.
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Sturgis?
Does this, is this such an important topic that has to be so defined? Because based on that, like, if we have two left-handed people, and they're sitting next to each other, and they're gonna hit elbows, like, is that really something that has to be so defined, that we're having to make rules and procedures over?
Councilmember Sturgis, thank you for the question. As mentioned previously, it may seem bizarre, and it may seem perhaps like a waste of time, that we are in fact spending still time on it. The situation is that the dais does need to be prepared and set up by staff, that we do have changeovers when there are election cycles, and so there does need to be general guidance as far as that formality. You'll see a similar situation where, when the mayor announces council at events, there's a common practice of announcing whomever serving as deputy mayor first, which changes as that individual changes, and then following through the remaining council members based on years served on council, effectively seniority. So there are in fact practices that come into play that seem like minutia, but it helps with just general ease of operations, if you will. And so we thought that this could button it up, let us run forward with it, and I would like to do so. Councilmembers, at this stage, I am sensing that we do in fact have consensus on this for four of council. So I would advise the clerk to go ahead and make the adjustment to take this into, accept this change as modified. And I'd like this to continue moving forward.
I'm sorry, still, I wanna say the consent, I think...
Councilmember Amer, please wait to be called on. Councilmember Amer?
I think Lisa doesn't understand. When we have this, we need to decide it. I'm sorry. The council member, I wanna explain to her, need to think, either we keep it back, like what we have at deputy mayor, will have the seating by talking, that what my submission with the clerk. The way being said, I understand there is rules, even the mayor won't call people, but either, they choose it by seniority, they can choose it by alphabetic. I just want a clarification for the new council member, that the way we had it before, the deputy mayor will decide it at the beginning of the year. This is not something I really like, wanna continue to talk about it, but I want an explanation. By voting by number, we remove the flexibility. I think the way be written should be same, that what my thinking.
But again... Thank you. Councilmember Amer, final statement on the topic. Part of the decisioning of the committee with the recommendation that we're acknowledging as accepted, was that the majority of your feedback and input throughout all of your recommendations was to remove activities from the role of deputy mayor, and to move to things that were more static by nature. We felt that the staff recommendation met that criteria and goal, as well as... as well as fell in line with the overall theme that we saw within your recommendations. So, with that, I'm gonna move on to our next item. Pausing for any technical difficulties?
Thank you.
Sharing charger here.
There's a plug in right there.
Oh, I'm good, thanks.
Uh, moving, are we good? Yes. Uh, thank you. Moving, uh, forward in the document, our next area of update is Section 2.6, uh, under our council retreat. This section incorporated mainly recommendations that had come from myself, which did take into account a lot of feedback that we had from other council members as well, uh, to clean up and, uh, do some improvements. So, what we see here is that we would work to coordinate with mayor and key staff to hold our annual retreat in the first or second quarter of the calendar year. And then, clarifying the additional sections that had been reviewed in last year's cycle and had quite a bit of conversation, but had not made it into the final documentation. So, these should feel both familiar but refreshed, uh, with the body that we have. Our first item, 2.6, pre-retreat preparation. The deputy mayor may choose either one-on-one meetings with council members or a collaborative council study session to discuss and establish the retreat agenda, format, and necessary logistics, including facilitation. The mayor and city administrator, uh, yet to be hired, uh, may offer recommendations for retreat topics. Any staffing and logistics desired for the retreat must be approved and coordinated through the mayor. Do we have questions or concerns on 2.6.1? Councilmember Amer?
I'm just confused because I tried to read by, uh, the state, the RCW 35A. The mayor shall be the chief executive. So, seeing that have deputy mayor running that, how that will go? Because there is rules and will go special meeting, it need to be run by the mayor. So, I feel like we're going...
Councilmember Amer? To answer your question, uh, the mayor is the administrator of the city government. We, as council, are the head of the legislative branch. The deputy mayor heads the legislative branch. For a council retreat, we have the ability to establish and run meetings that we need to handle council business. And part of that is being able to have, uh, planning, strategy, and time where we can meet together as a body and work on our, our policy planning for the city. You'll note that the update is written, uh, does include approval and coordination through the mayor. So, it's not something that is being, something that is in fact, uh, a right of council and does specifically call out working with the administration to ensure it happens appropriately. Thank you. Councilmember Sturgis?
So, question is the, so, preparation, to me, it looks like the deputy mayor may choose either one-on-one meetings with us or collaborative sessions to discuss the, to discuss the, uh, retreat agenda. To me, it feels like the role of the deputy mayor is to facilitate gathering our feedback as city council members to figure out what we would like on the agenda for the staff retreat. And then, also, the mayor and the city administrator, uh, are gonna bring their recommendations. So, can we, does it have to be so specific that they may choose either this or that? Or can we just be more general in saying the deputy mayor, uh, works with city council to, uh, discuss and establish retreat agenda?
Uh, thank you for the question, Councilmember Sturgis. The goal in this is to model what we had heard previously from Councilmember Amer, that historically she had driven to have agendas for retreats or that type of activity be discussed in a study session as an option. Uh, so, that was one of the reasons we had the study session on there. The reference to the one-on-one also allows for, if somebody misses that meeting, that the deputy mayor could go seek their additional input so they're not left out or in your situation with the timing of your appointment to be able to solicit, uh, input for that. So, I think the specificity is that this document does also serve for guidance for whoever steps into that role for deputy mayor in that they have flexibility for how they wanna do it and provides parameters, uh, you know, bumpers, if you will, uh, for what they can expect as far as going and doing that activity.
So, oh, am I allowed to ask an additional question, or?
Yes, Councilmember Sturgis.
So, again, the wording though of that is the deputy mayor chooses. Um, to me, the deputy mayor is not choosing our agenda for a retreat. They are working with city council to figure out what the agenda for the retreat should be. And so, they can't, they need to work with city council, and that could be in either one-on-one meetings or a study session. It's not, they get to choose how they want to deliver the agenda. That just, that seems like the deputy mayor is dictating the agenda versus, um, it's up to us to come up with the agenda as a body. And so, they can either work with us one-on-one, or it could be a, a study session. But the deputy mayor needs to work with council members to come up with the agenda. And the wording as this is saying that the deputy mayor gets to dictate the agenda, and that's not, I don't think that's the spirit we're trying to accomplish.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah, that's, that's not how I read that, uh, because that's a pre-retreat preparation. Um, and then, when you get down to the next one, the council has to approve the agenda. And so, this is saying, again, there should be some flexibility with the deputy mayor. We gotta keep in mind, again, that the, and, and I'm not really sure, because I've been hearing this for the last year plus. I'm not really sure what the issue is with the deputy mayor's role. Uh, because as council member, the chair said, the deputy mayor, if we're looking at this from a, you know, different levels, if you were at the national level, this would be our speaker of the house or our whip. If you were looking at this from a state level, same thing. So, the deputy mayor is, when they're elected by their peers, is the leader of this group. And so, for us to, I feel, in a lot of cases, what I've been hearing over the last several months, even back to last year, and I'm hoping that that's gonna kinda change in this room, is I'm hearing a lot of what feels like to me, a lot of undermining of that authority in that position. And so, the deputy mayor, the mayor does not run the city council. The elected person from this group by their peers is the person that is our, is, is our whip, is our, you know, our person, our, you know what I'm saying? So, I feel like there's a lot, when it's something that's said about the deputy mayor doing anything, we spend a whole lot of time just circling the block about that. And I don't, I don't really see the point in that. And so, the deputy mayor, like I said at the last meeting, when we elect that individual to be our leader of this body, then that individual has to have some level of authority, has to have some ability to make some decisions. That doesn't always necessarily mean we gotta have a study session over it or that individuals, everything that has to be weighed in. I understand we're all elected officials, but this individual by us was elected to be the leader of this body. And I feel, again, like there's just been a lot of consistent conversation around trying in some kinda way, you know, corral the deputy mayor and harness the deputy mayor and make sure the deputy mayor stays in check. I don't know what the situation was like prior to any of us, because most of us are new. I don't know what the situation was like and how the previous deputies mayors handled that position and done what they did. So, I would say that we should probably look at our current body and the people that we have on this council and go from there. And then, utilize these as kind of our guiding, right? Our guiding, our, our directives to keep us as a body from just straying all off and everybody just kinda doing whatever they wanna do. So, again, um, I feel like we've spent a lot of time, because now we're going back through the document, there's a section where the deputy mayor gets to make, may choose, may choose. And I don't see a problem with that. And so, again, I think we're kind of in the weeds a lot on, um, in particular, again, it's only when we get to stuff that's pertaining to the deputy mayor. And we spent, the last time, we, the last time we went through this, we spent so much time talking about the deputy mayor's role and what was or wasn't, that we ended up having to get somebody else to triage the meeting. Because we spent way too much time talking, and this is not the deputy mayor's rules and policies and procedures. This is the council's rules and policies and procedures. And the deputy mayor's portion in there is just one section. But we have 18 sections in this manual, and we're still on Section 2.6.1.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Uh, I think by timing, I think Councilmember Amer, your hand was up first, and then Councilmember Trump.
We need to think about it. We're not thinking people in possession now, or we think them for future. One thing I like, what council member, uh, Lisa said, we need not to really put it so worthy. Actually, the way, because you have to think about it, when you say choose by one-on-one, does that risk creating any equal input and go against our structure? That's mean, we kinda, we've been grouping two or three people rather than then we have it open. I think the way Lisa said it, I'm more, I feel more comfortable, more. And the way we have it, deputy mayor, it's still council member, is not, has authority or like pass and above council. And that's why, when we talk about it, we wanna keep things, uh...
Excuse me, Councilmember Amer? The deputy mayor is noted by Councilmember Clinton Taylor, is in fact elected by the peers of council to serve in a specialized capacity so that we can be a legislative, active legislative body. It may be uncomfortable to consider that there are things that, as an individual, whoever is serving that role has responsibilities that are different than being an ordinary council member. And they still retain the power to vote as a council member. So, to say that they are not distinctly different is not factual. And according to RCW, we do need the ability to have an individual in that role as part of being a strong mayor council structured body in the event that the mayor is ever incapacitated. It is in fact the deputy mayor that moves up into that.
Point of order? I don't think that we are, can, I don't think that, uh, Councilmember Han and Amer needs an explanation right now on who the deputy mayor is and what the role is. I don't think that was what she was saying at all. I feel like this is getting into a space that none of us need to be spending time on. I think that her comment was much higher level than that. And I'm uncomfortable at this place where we're redirecting each other, and giving each other feedback of our competency level right now.
Councilmember Sturgis, thank you for your input. I thought I was addressing a question and providing clarity.
I'm not taking it that way.
Councilmember Sturgis? Please wait to speak until you're acknowledged. I, as chair, was doing my best to address what I understood to be a question. And if Councilmember Amer does not have that question, she is empowered to speak up and provide that clarity. I'd like us to do our best to stay on topic for this item, which is 2.6.1. Councilmember Amer?
Just read, our structure, deputy mayor, we have the, the rules, how it's done. I see change, heavy change, put more power in the deputy mayor. You, the comment you said, if anything happened to the mayor, deputy mayor would go straight to be mayor. Actually, by the state law, no. And we have to limit it. Any council have more power?
Uh, based on what she just said, in...
Pardon? Clarity for the room. Point of order should be used when someone has not adhered to the structure for conduct of meetings. Point of order is not to be used for interrupting when we disagree with our fellow counterparts.
Personal remarks are not allowed.
Pardon?
It's, point of order is when personal remarks are not allowed.
So, is there, with your point of order, was there something per?
It's just that, um, we have a lot of new council members on board that in 11 years, I have never seen our rules and procedures to be gutted the way it's gutted. The deputy mayor has always been the legislative body's leader. We've appointed them. And for some reason or another, this year, we want to delete everything that a deputy mayor's role has been always followed. And we're still, still on the same thing as Councilmember Taylor said. We need to move above that and, uh, accept that our deputy mayor is our legislative leader. We've appointed them. And we keep going back to this and that, and this and that. And I just feel like we're wasting a lot of time. And the deputy mayor is our, we all voted her, voted them in, we vote them in. And we should accept them to follow the rules and not try to change it.
Thank you, Councilmember Trump. Manuel? Councilmember Amer, do you have something on 2.6.1, pre-retreat preparation?
My, my, just for clarification, all these are new, we just put it there. It has not been there, so we have, we have a right to talk about it. I like the idea to not have it really scripted, uh, what Councilmember Lisa said. Actually, it will work better to be not really that format, like by word, choose either one, I feel. Yeah.
All right.
Because this, this is for the body, I like the way.
One moment. In light of the fact that this exists as a document, one section in a full document, and we do have council approving the final retreat agenda in our next section, 2.6.2. And as noted by Councilmember Taylor, the intent of the committee was to not enforce a prescriptive nature, but to provide guidance for whomever is in the deputy mayor role, that they have options for how to solicit feedback and input for establishing that draft agenda that does in fact get approved by council. Do you have changes? Would you like to reiterate what you would prefer to see as far as language for the section?
Yes, I would like it to be more simplified, to say the deputy mayor will work with council members, uh, in a collaborative, uh, council study session or one-on-ones to establish the pre-retreat or the retreat agenda, period. It doesn't need to be so descriptive. The deputy mayor's role as a leader, who we've elected them to be, is to work and collaborate with all of us. And so, I don't know why we can't be more general in that description.
Councilmember Sturgis? I think that description is fine. Clerk, are you, were you able to capture that?
Yes, so I have, the deputy mayor will work with council members in either one-on-one meetings or a collaborative study session.
To establish the retreat agenda, period.
You don't want the rest of?
Or, uh, the retreat agenda format and necessary logistics, including facilitation.
All right. So, modifying, based on Councilmember Sturgis's input, uh, modifying that line, accepting the section.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Moving...
I'm sorry, Chair, can I, can I add for one correction in there? The city administrator, the actual title for that is Chief Administrative Officer.
Thank you, Director Gao. Clerk, could you modify? Thank you. Great, all right. Moving to Section 2.6.2, Retreat Agenda and Agenda Packet. Uh, once council has approved the final retreat agenda, the city clerk shall publish and distribute it to all council members, the mayor and key staff, no later than two weeks prior to the scheduled retreat. The city clerk will prepare and distribute the retreat agenda packet to council members one week prior to the scheduled retreat to facilitate council review and preparation. This section was established by the committee in talking with staff around lead times, but trying to find a fair balance in that as council, if this is an annual event that is requiring people to be taking time off work, is requiring, uh, staff to make accommodations, we wanna make sure that when we're showing up, that we're showing up prepared and ready to not waste anybody's time and to do good work. And so, the lead time requirements that you see established within this section are to make sure that, that we have a chance to prepare, right? Against that final agenda. So, once the final agenda's in place, we have that opportunity. If there are things that are going to be coming up on that and we need to... If there are things that are going to be coming up on that, and we need to engage community members, or have conversations, or do whatever preparation we need, it's just to give kind of minimum threshold for preparation. And when we had talked with the clerk, she said that that timeframe was something that would be manageable within her department. Councilmember Amor.
We remove flexibility, because when you say no later than two weeks, sometimes there is something new they need to add it. So make it at least more flexible, because like last time, we had to add something the last minute for the retreat. That's my comment. Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Amor. I think in the scenario of being able to get out the packet ahead of time, as we have with our Thursday packets, there are occasionally modifications that come after Thursday. I don't think we would be excluding that. I think we're inter. Not to speak on behalf of the committee, but I'm looking at Councilmember Taylor on this one, is that the assumption is the bulk of the packet would be out and provided in those windows. If there was something that came up or surfaced through emergency or other manner, I don't think it would necessarily be excluded. But if we have people who are facilitating different portions, they also need to be able to prepare for those windows. Other council member input?
No, it just says, oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Taylor.
It just says, once the council has approved it, it's already been approved. And then we got to give enough leeway time for the clerk's office, because they have other stuff they have to do. So it's already been approved by us.
And to clarify, in the timing, we might approve the agenda months in advance, and so there could be work happening. It's saying that we would receive that no later than two weeks in, in advance. Clerk, I think we're good on that. Section two dot three dot six, Retreat Facilitation. Council retreat shall take place within the city of Auburn. It may be facilitated by the deputy mayor, a key staff member, or a third-party facilitator. Again, this is not meant to be terribly prescriptive, but to provide guidance around what the expectation is with how the retreat gets organized. Do you have questions or comments on that section? Okay, hearing non-question. Councilmember Sturgis.
Do we have a formal process of gathering feedback around who we decide we want to facilitate? So, for instance, this last retreat was my first retreat. So did we have something that we gathered feedback to say, do we want the deputy mayor? Do we want a key staff member, or do we want a facilitator to come, facilitate the retreat? Is there a formal process around that?
Yes, it is under section two dot six dot one, Pre-Retreat Preparation, where we're working to establish that.
And we would decide who we want to be the facilitator?
I would have that be part of our final retreat agenda approval.
Okay.
Okay. Accepting two dot six dot three. Two dot six dot four, Post-Retreat Follow-Up. The council may request periodic updates from the mayor and key staff on council goals and priorities established at the retreat. Common practice within many organizations is that if you are putting goals out there, is to evaluate your progress against those. So looking to, again, just call out that as a legislative body, if we're looking for updates on things that we are establishing within those retreats, that we have the ability to seek follow-up to make sure that we're making progress. Councilmember Sturgis.
Sorry, the council may request, sounds like we would be adding a different ad hoc request to the staff. And so my brain just goes to the mayor and key staff would provide update, periodic updates as requested, and versus, if we're all able just to request anytime we want periodic updates, that's going to cause a lot of unscheduled work for staff. And so is there more of a methodical way we can say that after a retreat, the mayor and staff provide quarterly, or biannual, or yearly updates based on what we walked away with?
Councilmember Sturgis, I would be game for that modification. I think we are trying to strike a balance where council can make motions, and with majority vote, you know, request certain updates or reports or activities be completed. The challenge is, we didn't want to cross over the boundary of getting into too far into administrative. So we can take your update and check with legal, see if we're still within the appropriate boundaries of council on that. Can you repeat that one more time, what your proposal would be?
My proposal is that depending on what the outcomes are from our discussion at the retreat, if we all walk out saying X is what we want to be able to look and monitor, look at and monitor, then the mayor and the staff would say, this is when we will provide you updates and follow-up. And then we would then get those. I don't think that it would be appropriate for us as council to just request periodic updates whenever we want. I feel like that would be something that would cause a disruption to workflow.
Speaking to that point, periodic updates could be something as simple as when you meet with deputy mayor in, you know, a one-on-one or meeting with mayor in a two-on-one, to say, hey, can we add that to study session agenda? Right, which is already available to us as a practice today. Did we have input, Karen?
So.
So just in terms of what you can direct staff to do, requesting an update, not directing staff necessarily to do one. If you request one and it can't be facilitated for some reason, I anticipate that staff would respond and then give some sort of explanation as to, this is why it can't be provided, or here's the timeline that we're working with, or whatever the circumstances are. So it's within the bounds to be able to request an update on something, as long as you're not directing staff that they have to provide you an update within a particular time period or that they are required to. You can request, and it may not happen for whatever reason. So with that kind of understanding, you can request it, may not mean that staff is able to give it to you in a certain time period.
I'm going to, so many hands. Councilmember Sturgis, Councilmember.
I guess just to clarify my point, is that from a strategic planning standpoint, we're in a staff retreat. We're coming up with actionable items that we want to be able to see move forward, et cetera. There should be, within that planning at the retreat, discussion where we say, this is when we would like to see X by when, and this is when we would like to see updates by when. And then that is when staff would then have the clear expectation of when they should provide us updates. I don't like, the wording on this says, we can just ask whenever we want, and that, to me, sounds like a disruption. And so I would like us to be able at a retreat, to be able to agree upon whatever executed items we're talking about, or items that we're, you know, planning through. We should have a plan on when we're expecting updates and follow-up, and it should not be ad hoc that we're just able to then ask for information on it. That's my concern, based on the wording.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor, Councilmember Trump Manuel, and Councilmember Amor.
Thank you, Chair. I, I think, the problem that I'm seeing with this is the fact that council doesn't direct staff. Council's requests need to go to the mayor. So then mayor directs the staff on this one. So the wording on this is a little, to me, a little squishy. If we wanted a post-retreat follow-up, it needs to go directly to the mayor. Mayor directs the staff. We have no control over staff.
Agreed.
Are you, to clarify, Councilmember Taylor, are you recommending the council may request periodic updates from the mayor on council goals and priorities established at the retreat?
Yes.
Yes.
And striking key staff?
Correct.
Fine.
Okay, Councilmember Trump Manuel? No, Councilmember Amor?
No, one of the things I was reading at council, it's like, I feel like it should, in the retreat, with the majority of council, because maybe one thing, everybody of us, we want to hear update, and some things we don't. So when we said council, that's mean, we're seven. Maybe Clinton, he want to know about the new space shuttle we will have here, while I want to know about horses. So that's where I think I'd like it to be a retreat then ahead by majority of us.
Councilmember Sturgis, with the modifications recommended by Councilmember Taylor, are you comfortable with that as-is, as it, I believe also fits within legal guidance?
Yes, that, that aligns with my intent, which is, I don't think any of us should be ever disrupting staff and asking them for ad hoc updates, and so.
Yeah, the goal was not to randomize staff. The goal of the committee was just to establish some mechanism to allow for post-retreat follow-up, to check against progress and milestones. The challenge, I think, in saying it would be established within the retreat, is there are times where staff may say, we need to look a little bit before we can tell you when we could have that ready, or there are other.
But I agree that then the mayor should be following up with us.
That is, that's why it was the mayor first in that statement. So I'm hearing the council may request periodic updates from the mayor on council goals and priorities established at the retreat. And we're comfortable with that.
And take out key staff.
All right, accepted with modification. Thank you. Moving into our next item in the section, two dot seven, Council Listening Sessions. So the council may conduct community listening sessions as desired, council referring to the full body. However, any staffing or logistics desired for such listening sessions must first be approved by and coordinated through the mayor. The purpose of these meetings will be to provide a forum to hear from the community on topics of interest. The community listening sessions may be held at various locations throughout the city, and may be facilitated by the mayor, the deputy mayor, a member of staff, or a third-party facilitator. For OPMA purposes, these meetings shall be considered special meetings of the council and shall be coordinated with the mayor, city attorney, and city clerk. Councilmember Taylor.
Thanks, Chair. The question I have around this is, this is, how is this any different than the listening sessions that we, we facilitated last year?
Great question. The difference between this and those sessions is that this would allow all of council to be present within the same meeting, similar to when we have a study session or we have a council meeting. One of the things that we had seen in some of the requests that had come in was a desire to have scenarios where all of council can be present, hearing the same information. And the difference in this versus a study session or a council meeting is that, like the community conversations would allow for a format that could be more informal and have more back-and-forth dialogue between council as a body and members of the community or groups. And so we don't, we were not attempting to prescribe what those scenarios would be, but to put this as a function available as a future tool, should we ever want to take advantage of it, and just putting some structure around it. And so this came from some models that I had seen within other cities for that. And so I think the major difference, to your question, is from what we did before to what we would be doing is, when we did it through the fall, we could only have, I think it was set up for two.
Right.
You know, two per site. And I know that there were some sites where, because that neighborhood had more issues, more people wanted to be there, and so this allows us to just all be present.
Can I follow up?
Yeah, I'm going to do follow-up, and then we'll work our way.
Can you provide information from where you grabbed this from? I'd like to see the information that you have, so I can, before I can make an informed decision on whether or not I want to move forward with something like this, I would like to personally, like, look over that.
Sure. Do you want it the second, or?
I mean, I don't, I don't feel comfortable making any sort of decision on this piece right here until I can see the information that you studied, so I can make an informed decision.
I will send that out through the clerk's office this week, because my assessment of our progress tonight is that I will not finish tonight, but happy to share it. And again, it was structured based off of samples I found for other cities, that to note. We're also code cities and strong mayor council cities, so matching the pattern there. And then Council, Councilmember Trump Manuel.
I like what you put on here, because as, when we were having all of those meetings, the mayor would put it out, and by the time several of us council members were able to go and put our names down, we had already had several people already put their names on there, and that did not allow us to go. And that was that just about every single place that we had, it, people gone on there very quickly, and we didn't get to go. So this will allow us all to be able to be there and hear all that, because I had a lot of constituents ask, why weren't you there, your council person? So this is, I, I like that, you know, being able to be inclusive of all the council members.
Thank you for the positive feedback. Councilmember Amor.
I have two comment.
Sure.
So I know when, I believe we all need to be in the same meeting, but again, the way being done, we had seven meeting. The way being done, not every council could go, so it was more relaxing. So we're not, like, if one council did not attend the meeting, they will look bad in front of the other people. That's comment. Second, when we have this everything, I get scared that people may use it for their benefit during campaigning time. So this is where I feel my thinking, that's why we did the community, that's okay. And yeah, that's why we have our, what we call it, our public comment. Public, they're, they're welcome to come at any time to us.
Thank you for the feedback, Councilmember Amor. Again, the context for this was, the community listening sessions that were organized by the city were beneficial, well-received, they felt effective. I think the benefit in having this, again, as a tool, and we worked pretty diligently to try and get the writing, or the, the, the boundaries of this, because we didn't want to cross over into administrative space. But to get it appropriate with both the city attorney and clerk, in that there could be scenarios where it is beneficial for us as a body to be available for a community. Now, as far as what would trigger this, or how we would initiate it, it would be something that would come, likely, from a study session like this, where we can discuss, you know, how many, how long, where, you know, and all the, the pieces that go with it, and it would take a vote and a motion to, to utilize it. So if there were concerns about timing or situations of that nature, we can discuss that as a body. So again, the goal is really to create tools that we can use, so that way we can be responsive to the community. Councilmember Sturgis.
For the record, I would just like to say that I understand we're all busy, but we all also volunteered to run for these positions. And, and so I guess I would just like to say on here, that if we're going to move towards trying to have something in writing that says we can all attend, I think it's important that if we say we're going to attend, we attend, because it does cause additional work for staff to be able to put out a public notice saying that there's going to be a quorum. And it's embarrassing when we show up with multiple of us that have replied, and we've had staff go out of their way to notice a public quorum, and then not all of us are in attendance after we've responded that we were going to be there. So, and myself included, you know, it's important that we all, if we say we're going to be there, we're going to be there. And so I'm just concerned with this, just because I've seen, I've only been here a couple of months, and I've seen multiple events where we've, we've responded, staff has had to do extra work to then notice, and then we haven't all shown up. And so for me, that's extra work for staff that's unnecessary. And, and so I'm just, I guess I would just be concerned there. I, I love the intent, but I think that we're all speaking passionately about something, where are we willing to make sure that we all show up 100% of the time?
Thank you, Councilmember Sturgis, and that's great feedback, and we actually have an item in the document that addresses that. As far as ensuring that we meet our commitments when we've RSVP'd to events. And with this item, it's not something we've done before in this context or with this capacity. So it could be one where, if we start here and have lessons learned, maybe it modifies in the future, right?
Great.
So, all right, I'm seeing, not, well, I, to be, one moment. I'm seeing general consensus from the majority of council that we feel positive about this for the time being, and because we'll have another session. I know, Councilmember Taylor, you do want to see the originating references. I will get those out and provided. So this one, let's. Accept it?
No.
No. We do have a majority of council that accepts it.
No, it's here. It's the people who present to you.
Stay in order, you can't stop talking over.
I'm sorry.
I'm still doing that.
Thank you, councilmember Taylor. Councilmember Amor?
We are three here. Three said yes, three said we need more information, that's mean we don't have consent.
Councilmember Amor, this was from a committee of three, and councilmember, pardon me, Deputy Mayor Rakes was part of this language as presented.
No, I'm sorry, by, it doesn't matter, we done ad hoc, and you still, you may agree there, and you have, by now, this should be bring again for discussion, because I see three, yes, three, no.
Amor? I'm chairing the committee, I'm chairing this section of the session. The language is written, came out of committee, which is an affirmative from the members of the committee. I'm seeing a fourth councilmember giving consensus. I am committing to provide the additional information for the other councilmembers and allow for additional discussion, because we are not done with the full document. This is not the final approval on the document. This is working our way through a draft and having feedback. As it stands, my recommendation to the clerk is to accept this.
Chair, we'll put it in hold, because we said we still want to discuss that, and you force us, same person not here, and they agree, and that's not to be done. If I'm home, and you vote, and you, tell.
Councilmember Amor, if we had modified the language, I would be more inclined to say we can bring it back and ensure that Deputy Mayor Rakes is up to speed and agreeing with this section. What we're doing here, as a body, is going through a draft document, iterating our way through, and we've had discussion. I'm seeing consensus, and the language is written, came out of a committee, which was our fourth party.
Show me the consented. Three said no, three said yes.
Councilmember Amor?
We talking about what here, council chair? Your, this one should be in hold till next session. Or you don't need us to be here, if you have the consent, you're for, why we're here, if everything being designed, I don't think you want to hear our, but it's look like it's clear.
Councilmember Amor? Please hold accusations of a personal nature, that's inappropriate. In this meeting, we have received input, we have been making modifications. I am committing to get the additional information as has been requested. And as we continue to go through the document, we're going to have other sessions. We can continue to discuss this item if it comes back. Anything that's in this document, we can reopen and discuss again. The challenge in that is that we are trying to make progress and move through the document this evening.
Chair, you pushing us, and you're not listening to our voice. We said let's hold on this one till we see, because still, you didn't even hear my comment, and you're saying it's done, we have consent, we're for, that's mean it's done. We, I don't think you need us to attend next rules and procedure, because it's clear, you have consent being done, there is no need to hear the other half of the body.
Councilmember Trump Manuel, please stay focused on.
I am, I am just saying that is getting late, and I am tired, and I feel that we ought to just stop right here and move on at our next meeting. When Deputy Mayor Rakes can be here, or else we're going to be going through this line by line and always being challenged. I think we ought to just bring it back. That's how I feel, and I just, I just feel like walking out right now.
Councilmember Trump Manuel, thank you for your input. Members of council, I had been hoping to work through an additional half hour. Do we have interest in continuing in the document, or do we feel we would like to pause at this time?
Thank you very much.
You're going to pause?
Yes.
Committee member Clinton Taylor?
Pause.
Councilmember Sturgis?
I guess I'm just kind of embarrassed and disappointed. As a new councilmember, who is really just sitting here as a community member, the fact that we can't work through our council rules and procedures appropriately, and that we need to go home because we're tired, that's just, it's 8:00 PM, it's something that we all decided that we're up for, and I guess I'm just concerned. I, this is disappointing to me, is that we can't agree on moving forward to get rules and procedures in place for us. My goal would be is that we're talking about things that can make the city better, and this is a document to help us as a city council work well together. And I know it's important, I'm not trying to discount it, but yeah, I guess I'm just disappointed in tonight's process.
Thank you, councilmember Sturgis. And tonight's process, it has had challenges on all sides. I've worked diligently to prepare the materials and try and chair the committee and remain reasonable in guiding this session, as it has many topics that many of us care deeply about. So I appreciate your feedback, and if you have other thoughts on how to improve the process, I welcome those in the future, either tonight or between now and our next session. Councilmember Taylor?
I, while I understand everybody's frustrations are high right now, and there is some personal stuff that is happening, we are not doing our community a service by folding our computers and calling it a night. They want us to get through this. I think we put personal feelings aside, and we continue to work through this. I'm disappointed, just like councilmember Sturgis is. I signed up for this, I'm in for the long haul. I think we push forward.
Agreed. Mark, can we take a five-minute recess? And we'll regroup at 8:12.
This is embarrassing.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
We're ready.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor?
Yes.
Was councilmember Sturgis in the hallway?
I did not.
She's here.
Sorry. I'm like, nope, she was not.
Okay. All right. Calling us back in to, well, technically, you need to pause back in. We have reconvened. All right. So, picking up, based off where we left off, I'm just going to do one quick refresher for everybody before we continue, which is on section 7. I'd like to call attention to our existing section 7 on debates, which is courtesy. So members of council and the presiding officer in the discussion comments or debate of any matter or issue shall address their remarks to the presiding officer, be courteous in their language and deportment, and shall not engage in or discuss or comment on personalities, or make derogatory remarks or insinuations with respect to any other member of council or any member of the staff or public, but shall at all times confine their remarks to those facts which are germane and relevant to the question or matter under discussion. Do we have any questions on that item? I don't think so. Okay. Back to where we had left off, which was a question of accepting proposed section 2.7, which was on the topic of listening sessions. The question that we had had with regard to this item was whether or not we would be able to provide, pardon me, whether or not the committee would be able to provide the reference materials upon which this section was based. It was based on Issaquah and Bonny Lake. Issaquah has, within their document, as a code city with a mayor/council structure, section 4.02C, page 22, community listening sessions, and Bonny Lake, which is also a code city with mayor/council, has Article 3, pages 7 and 8. Pialip, which is council manager, so somewhat different, also had section for listening sessions and special meetings, which was section 11, page 9. I can either pull those for you, or you can follow up on them, but that was in the space of do councils as legislative bodies have the ability to have specialized sessions, such as listening sessions? And the answer to that is yes. Already exists in other Washington communities. So I will get that, I will share that out for everybody. My understanding in going through this item was I had not heard challenges on the language or the presentation. We had discussed scenarios, and I had thought addressed that within the conversation, was not trying to have anyone feel unheard in that session, but looking as chair to try and move us forward, as it is in fact a document we have a lot to get through. My belief in being able to provide that after not having heard any challenges within the session was that in providing, that would address any concerns that you had had. And councilmember Taylor, if that's not the case, or you have other feedback?
Chair, respectfully, again, I will repeat, I don't feel comfortable making any decisions until I see the research that you have done moving forward. I would like to see where, I guess you provided where you got them from and whatnot, but I don't feel comfortable making a decision on the language here until I have a really good grasp of where you got this information from. Does that make sense?
Not entirely, as this language did also come from a committee that had oversight from our city attorney and city clerk. So even without the samples, we have the ability to insert this. I'm providing the samples in, in the spirit of letting you know that this isn't something pulled out of nowhere, this is something that exists and is used in other communities and could be beneficial for Auburn. And so we structured this, knowing that we have that power available to us to build tools for ourselves, and worked with the clerk and the attorney to put it within confines that we thought would not overstep an administration, but recognize the ability of a legislative body to be able to meet with its community members in an official capacity, and in a way that would allow for better collaboration and better dialogue. To you, councilmember Amor?
I could understand, like, we may not have the vote, the consent of like three or two, but I think we should respect the request from councilmember Taylor. Let's keep this for next time, and we move to the next one. We don't need to behold on it. If one council don't feel comfortable. If one council don't feel comfortable, respectfully, we will say, okay, we'll give them the time to go back to review, and let's move to the next page, and we hold on in this one. So, so we, so I get feel every voice being heard, but the way now I feel like, we have consent, then it's done. And this is not the way it should be done, even if one, we need to give them the time. We can move to the next one, and we hold on this one. We can hold on it.
SGV attorneys' consensus. Thank you, Councilmember Trumpagnell. Councilmember, or, sorry.
So, Councilmember Baldwin and members of the council, I was able to review both your rules of procedure and Roberts' rules, and briefly some of the Auburn City Code. For clarity, just so you know which, the framework in which you're referencing this is, or with your, that you're working within, this is a little bit of an odd instance because you are trying to put forward something and figure out where people kind of land to facilitate discussion. That being said, study sessions are less formal, and they give you the opportunity to discuss and debate issues that will then come forward to regular meetings. So you're not making any final decisions here. That being said, if you are going to cut off discussion, that is something that takes a motion, and then that would result in a vote, and we cannot do absentee voting, in, you, you all have not adopted proxy voting or anything of absentee voting, and so in that instance, the deputy mayor, being absent today, wouldn't necessarily, you know, ha- have sort of the same maybe role in the discussion that you guys are having right now. I just want to, I, it's, it's a fairly informal conversation, and so the rules are much less formal than they are in your council meetings, but I did want to make that clear since we're talking about voting, and, and different points of order have been brought up and things like that. I did want to just make clear that I did confirm that Roberts' rules of order don't allow for proxy voting unless it is adopted in your rules, and currently does not.
Thank you. And as noted, this is trying to work our way through a draft. The discussion of consensus, we cannot do formal votes in study session without first suspending the rules of procedure, so as I speak to where people are as far as trying to gather that consensus, to my earlier point, this had come out of committee, and was accepted by all committee members in order to be in the document as such. At this stage, if you can hold for one second, due to the time and due to my desire as chair to progress this through this, is I will hold on this item, if you want to leave that in a hold state. But do you know, the supporting materials will come out this week at my earliest convenience, which may take a day or two. Councilmember Amher, are you comfortable as we move to our next item?
Thank you. Because technically, if we do it, if we do the consent, this one will be removed by three yes, three no, yeah, so thank you for move it for next session.
Alright, um, continuing, oh.
I had a question.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Sturgis?
Um, so, looking at the council listening sessions, so the spirit of it is, is that we want to be able to hear from the community and do listening sessions. The way that our city is governed is that the mayor leads the city, and that we are a, you know, legislative body that supports the facilitation of that. And so, from a wording standpoint, can't we, can we consider the council can work with the mayor to, to set up listening sessions as desired? I mean, that would be, I don't know why we would want to go around the mayor to facilitate listening sessions.
So, to clarify, Councilmember Sturgis, the council may conduct community listening sessions as desired, however, any staffing or logistics desired for such listening sessions must first be approved by and coordinated through the mayor. It is very distinctly clarifying that this has to function in conjunction with, in collaboration with, our administrative branch of government. It's not trying to subvert, go around, or do anything, but it is recognizing as a legislative body, we are empowered to have forum and hold forum for our community members, to have whatever type of engagement we want. And what that look like is not finalized in this section, it's simply saying, here's a tool, it is available to us, and we have, if we want to use it, we would have to coordinate through the administrative branch, because of the requirements of the staffing that support it.
Right, I get that. I just think that the spirit of it is that we're here to support, you know, supporting the mayor and running the city. And so, for us to just ad hoc decide we want to conduct a, a listening session, and then we'll go get it approved by the mayor, versus collaboratively, you know, working with the mayor to decide, you know, almost going back to the retreat philosophy, is deciding when would we want to do listening sessions, what would we want to do them for? We should be working with the mayor to decide these things, and then figure out how to go schedule them. It just seems like this is very isolated and separate, and working against versus with.
Thank you for that feedback. I, I don't know where you're coming up with that interpretation of this section. There is nothing outlined here that says it would be working against the mayor. It explicitly calls out that it would be working with the mayor.
It says approval by the mayor.
Yes.
Yeah.
But it would be initiated by council with a motion and vote of council, as a legislative body. We are a separate branch of the government, and we do in fact work with the mayor on many things, and I would expect that we would continue to do so here. So I am curious where your interpretation of the language would indicate it would be in any capacity working against the mayor.
It just says, as the council may conduct community lis- listening sessions as desired.
Yes.
And, and so, to me, I feel that, and, or however, any staffing and logistics desired for such listening sessions, listening sessions must be approved by and coordinated with the mayor. I feel that, just from a wording standpoint, and trying to make this more simplistic, is going back to the spirit of the retreat, is that the council, our role here is to act as a, a servant of the community, and then to work with the mayor, and then decide to, and plan, from a strategic planning session, I'm thinking, we would work with the mayor and say, hey, we would love to do some listening sessions in this space, and then it would get planned and, and figured out from there. I just don't think that council coming up with an idea and saying, hey, we want to conduct this, I don't know where that aligns with the plans of the city and how things are, are working. Maybe I'm just looking at it different, I don't know.
I, I believe that you may be, because I don't know is that council just comes up with ideas. We, we're a governing body, right? And there's a very strong likelihood, as you'll see, this is in line with the retreats, that it could come out of a retreat, or it could come out of people who show up to, you know, to our city hall, or it could come from how we get engaged through the community. I don't think we know how it would surface, that would be speculation. It simply reflects, and the language, again, drafted with the help of our city attorney, was meant to, to describe a tool that would be there for us. And I don't know that the recommendations are materially different from what is present here, because what I'm hearing is that it's more about wordsmithing, and, and I would be hesitant to tackle that without the attorney speaking to what had gone into getting this drafted up. Councilmember Taylor?
Oh, I didn't raise it, but are you calling on me?
Oh, I thought you had your hand up before.
No, no, I just, I, I'm, I mean, it's pretty clear to me, I mean, I'm.
Bless you, thank you, excuse me.
I mean, I understand what it's saying, I mean, sometimes we can, I, I kind of agree, sometimes we can, sometimes I can get lost in the wording around things, but I understand what it's saying. And so, I understand what that's saying, and it's a tool that can be used, I'm not saying that I'm for or against it. I talked through it when we were in the session, attorney weighed in, city clerk weighed in, and this is what the language they approved, and I thought, I saw was appropriate, I would say approved. They saw it was, that was appropriate, there was a lot of discussion around, because some of this section was new anyway, just got added in, so there was a lot of discussion around this particular four or five points that were added here. You know, it's something that if we, you know, wanted to have a listening session, I mean, we do have constituents too, and there's times where they may want to have some FaceTime with us, and I may say, okay, let me get back to you on that. Hey, I'd like to, you know, get a group of us together, or all of us go together, and, I don't know, go to the community center, and there's some folks that want to talk about, I don't know, people letting their dogs run around the neighborhood or whatever, I'm just saying, but it should be something that we should have as a tool we could use if we desire to do that. As a legislative body, we should be able to do that, and then you work in conjunction with the mayor and say, hey, there's something that came up, and, you know, can we, however that conversation might go, I don't think this is, you know, all the details about how that process, process would go, but it does say that anything moving forward needs to go through the mayor, and needs to be approved, and, and needs to be coordinated with the mayor, and I agree with that. I mean, you could have a great idea, and want to run out here and talk to everybody in the community, but you shouldn't just be out here just, you know, setting up your own meetings and sessions and stuff, and just, just talking because your constituents want to talk to you, but you should make yourself available to be able to, you know, be out in the community, and be visible, and be seen, and talk to your constituents.
Thank you.
And right now, there's nothing that allows us to do that, not in that format.
Not, to clarify, not in a format with all of us.
No, that's what I said, not in this format, yeah.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Amher?
I need just clarification, because my understanding by state law, the mayor, it's the executive, and she's the one who run the, this will be considered a special meeting, so it need to be run by the mayor. I didn't understand how the meeting would be run by the person if we be the last, like, oh, we decided to do the meeting, oh, we need you to be in this time. So, I get what Lisa's saying, we need to be, it's collaboration with the mayor, because by state and maybe the attorney explained it to me, my understanding by RW three five, the mayor who run the meeting, so we need to, even wording, to be coordinate with the mayor. Yes, we, I think I get what Lisa's saying, the wording, it's here, like, we decided, we vote, we need you to be there tomorrow, that's how, when you read it. So the language probably need to be more collaborative, working together, or maybe because we did the, the council listening session, we done it when needed, but we don't need it, like, I need to go to my neighbor to show them, I'm a council, let bring everybody, so that's the way, I'm just saying, I'm giving you example. We need to do it when needed, and working with the mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Amher. As noted, we expressly have it in the section that it only functions through working with the mayor, so that is part of the language.
I had a, and I.
Councilmember Sturgis?
Sorry, I see your frustration, I apologize.
It's alright.
I thought this exercise was wordsmithing, so that's what I, I came prepared for, so that's the lens that I'm using. And so, when I'm looking at the council listening sessions, to me, the first line just reads as an I gotcha. It's council wants to go meet with, you know, people and do listening sessions, versus wordsmithing, words matter to me. And so, for me, when I look at my role as city council member, our role as city council member, the role of the mayor, the role of city staff, I feel that I thought our exercise for this whole rules and procedure, you know, document was wordsmithing. And so, for me, wordsmithing's important here to make it a collaborative exercise. So, when I'm looking at it, is the council may work with the mayor to conduct listening sessions as needed, based on learnings in the community, et cetera. I don't, the way that it's worded here is, the council can just decide, hey, you know what, we're ticked off about this, we want to go do a listening session, and yep, the mayor needs approve, to approve it. That doesn't seem very collaborative, or, you know, it feels like an I gotcha. So, I thought the intent of this exercise was wordsmithing it, and so, from my perspective, when I'm looking at collaborative, how are we best supporting the mayor as a body here to help run the city effectively, make sure that our constituents are getting the leadership they needed, they need, and count on, I'm looking for more collaborative leadership messaging, which is, the council can conduct listening sessions based on topics that they feel are important, based on what collaboration they're working with, with the mayor, et cetera. So I just, I feel like this is worded in a way that I don't think, it, it feels like we're stepping out of place, saying, we're gonna go do this, and yeah, mayor, you have to approve it, but it's not in collaboration with what's the bigger intent.
Thank you, Councilmember Sturgis. Could you provide where you read the I gotcha?
The council may conduct community listening sessions as desired, however, any staffing or logistics desired for such listening sessions must first be approved by and coordinated through the mayor.
Correct.
That feels like an I gotcha. To me, it is, the, the council may work with the mayor to put together listening sessions based on what they see fit, or what they're hearing out in the community, so that we can learn and hear more from our community. I don't feel any collaboration in that first sentence, and that's, it, you know, again, my, my interpretation was that we were wordsmithing, and so I'm just looking for more collaborative language, and I don't think that the council should be dictating the listening sessions, I think that we should be collaborating with the mayor based on feedback we're hearing from the community, and then figuring out which listening sessions we should be doing.
Thank you for your input. This item is noted, we are gonna hold on, and so, shifting forward in the document, we are going to section three. Three, I believe, dot one, oh, which is new business. And so, this item for new business was responding to, I believe, the request of, this item. So while we were reviewing the section, the committee determines the language with a forty-eight hour deadline for new business was throttling council's ability to openly discuss and propose new business items, and that the deadline was limiting council's ability to be responsive to public comments and feedback in real time. The committee updated this line in a manner intended to avoid surprises in the agenda, while also encouraging a forum for new business to come forward, while guiding new topics into study session for extended group discussion. So, within the new business section, this is part of a regular council meeting that often goes unused, but again, it's a tool that's available to us as council members, where in the meeting, to be able to say, here's something that we would like to see, you know, like to discuss, or like to, whatever the motion is, I can't speculate what motions people may bring forward in the session, but for council to be able to use that new business in, as a mechanism to bring things forward for future study sessions, and so really, it's about introducing new business, and that's really it. It's not necessarily about dropping something in that would immediately be voted on, but being able to begin that intake process for things that council would want to bring forward from a legislative stance, and expressly directs it to be coordinated into study session, so that way, the full body can, can have dialogue like this, where we can talk about things, and talk about whether, you know, talk about whatever we need to. Do we have questions on this item? Okay, Councilmember Amher?
Oh, my brain stopped. So, we remove it, the new business, like forty-eight hour, to have it week ahead? That's what I'm reading, because if we bring it in the study session, like, ending this study session, said, next study session, I wish to hear about, I don't know, something. Is that, do I'm reading correctly? Or you mean in the meeting? Or you mean in the meeting, we said, I have a new business. I want to bring it now. Let go ahead. Explain it more to me because my brain stopped.
Yes, okay. Well, maybe we'll try and wrap up by nine. What was intended here is that when we have a regular council meeting, we have a section of the agenda that has existed for as long as I can remember. New business has been a section of the agenda. Typically, as a body, we just jump right through new business. There's not necessarily stuff that is on there that hasn't previously been in front of council. And so if there was something to be introduced, it's really about an introduction or an intake mechanism. So if someone saw the discussion on CHAMPs related to what about, you know, how are our plans related to heat, including not just people, but their, you know, their full household to include pets? If we wanted to introduce something into a conversation or into a topic, it's really about introducing new business. And the better, the flip side of it, perhaps the better side of it, is that it's just meant to drive things into a future study session. So we can have dialogue and we can have discussion. We do have other mechanisms for getting things into study session. But it doesn't mean that we can't utilize new business as a vehicle for that. Because oftentimes, as we have our meetings, we hear different things in public comment or we hear things from staff that crop up. And, and again, it's just about trying to, you know, put tools and levers in place so we have ways that we can drive legislation when we see fit or when we have things that we need to. Councilmember Emma, your hand was up first, and then Councilmember Trump Manuel.
So we have it and never been, there is nothing before stop us from having it. And I remember last year, we talked about it. And they know, everybody agree that even like mayor and people that they need heads up 48 hour. Nobody like to be surprised sitting to have topic. From the respect as a personnel, we see like we want the agenda two weeks ahead. We want everything two weeks ahead. But guess what? While I'm sitting here, I saw race there. I want to bring the topic. I know we can vote and will be debate. I think we should keep it as before, 48 hour. Because maybe, and think about it, if I'm bringing something, then it will look like dumb. While the staff said we done this few years ago. I think it's the good to keep it as written before 48 hour notes. I'm the one who like to get to know. And we still have a tool, we could still use it if we want to add anything.
Hold on, Councilmember Taylor.
No, let him go ahead and I'll.
Okay, Councilmember Taylor.
Well, in this case, oh, I'm sorry. Did you call on me? I'm sorry, thank you. So in this case, right here, it would be more than 48 hours. Because based on this, you would raise interest for a future study session. As need. So that would be more than, because we don't have 48 hours study sessions. So we get to new business and someone says, hey, no, I'd like whatever to be considered for a future study session. This would be a place you could use that or not. And, you know, it would have to be coordinated with the mayor and the deputy mayor. And we could get it on a study session. I think 48 hours sometimes is too quick of a turnaround to put stuff out for folks because people don't have time to review that. So at least I know, we may not have a study session for another two or three weeks, another month. And so, yeah.
Same, I would, thank you, I'm sorry.
Councilmember.
Sorry, we're all tired.
Tired.
Tired. So I will, I see where other council member, Taylor, is talking to in the sense that when we're on the council floor and if something comes up, it's a week, not 48 hours notice. It's almost a week where they give the, does that make sense?
Okay.
Sorry.
No.
Right? Am I wrong in reading that?
It's in the meeting where we vote, like in the meeting.
Sorry. So the clarifying here is that it's intended to use new business to get it on any future study session. We don't know if it's the next one or even farther out.
Okay.
Arguably. So there's plenty of flexibility in that. It's just saying, hey, guys, you can use this moment on the agenda to bring stuff forward.
Got it.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Yeah, and then in the past, we used to bring it up. And we used, it has to be seconded. And then when it's seconded, then we bring it back to a study session. So it's not that you make a motion that you want to bring this and that. And then we do it. It has to be a second.
Councilmember Emma.
Just for clarification, this is under regular meeting, not study session. Because if you wanted to have it on study session, then we do it during our study session where we have a new business. We add it to say, next, we want that. That's where I'm confused, because this is during our regular meeting.
The city's telling us.
All the mayor is in her hand.
Thank you, Mayor Backus.
Councilmember Emma, I think you're misunderstanding the structure of what's here. I think Councilmember Taylor, Thailers have expressed it in that it's simply utilizing the new business forum to make motion, which would be seconded to put something on a future agenda at some forward date, not even necessarily a week out, potentially farther. And then Mayor Backus.
Thank you, Chair. The wording that was in, in the new business section that has been edited out was to provide 48 hours notice to the chair of the meeting so that there are no big surprises on the council floor. Because that has happened in the past. And in fact, there have been items brought up under new business that should never have been discussed on the council floor.
Right.
So that's why the 48 hours notice is in there. It's to notify the chair of the meeting that you are going to bring up an item.
Oh.
Not 48 hours for it to come back to a committee or to come back to a study session. It's the courtesy of letting the chair know in advance so that there can be some discussion and be prepared.
Well, worded that way makes sense.
Yeah.
That's why the 48 hours was included in there so that it doesn't come as a surprise on the council floor or an item that should not be discussed on council floor is brought up. Therefore, putting the city in a precarious situation.
Okay, so in response to that, I understand, mayor, that there had been this language previously, which was meant to give a heads up on any business where action would be taken at the meeting. The change here is that the intent is shifted in that it's not about taking action at the meeting for something to be passed that night. It's about being able to utilize new business simply to introduce new business for future legislative evaluation. And so I think it's a shift altogether, not to be in any type of space of gotchas, but simply to use that part of the agenda for its intended purpose.
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Sturgis.
I just have a concern with that because at the end of the day, all of us have really cool ideas. And for us to be leveraging a city council meeting to bring our cool idea to the table, ad hoc, just off the cuff, doesn't seem like an efficient use of time. To me, it feels like we should have the preparation of vetting out our idea and then meeting with the appropriate people and then bringing it to, I mean, to me, the element of surprise, the 48 hours seems responsible. I don't, I don't think, because depending on how conversation is that night, et cetera, one of us could come up with an idea and say, hey, I think we should talk about this. Well, is that really vetted out? Is that efficient? Is that effective? Is that a good use of time? Do we really need to dive into that? I would be concerned on last minute ideas coming to the table during a city council meeting.
Thank you for your.
I think all of us should be more prepared in thinking of things that we're wanting to bring forward for really serious discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Sturgis. Who was first on this? Councilmember Trump Manuel.
That's why we have a deputy mayor. The deputy mayor sets one-on-one meetings with you, with the council members. The mayor does as well. And those are, both of them have asked, do you have anything to bring forward? The mayor asks on her one and twos. That's why our deputy mayor has always tried to set up meetings with all of us. And that's the time that either before a retreat or to bring something forward to the council. So we should be utilizing our deputy mayor and meet with her and bring these discussions to her so she can also bring it to the mayor to bring to council. And that's how we used to do it in the past. For some reason or another, the deputy mayor is being erased here and everything is going to, to the mayor. That's how I, I've been reading what's being said, what is being said here. And down at the bottom, you've got that on there. Shall coordinate a future study session date for considerations. So it's already in there and.
Thank you, Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Well, I think she overheard it.
No, I think she has another comment.
I think she has another comment as well.
Thank you, everyone. To speak to your point, Councilmember Trump Manuel, the deputy mayor and the mayor are both included in this in that they do coordinate agendas. The new business is strictly new business. And while at times, the legislative process may be messy or uncomfortable or maybe people don't like ideas, or maybe they do. The reality is, is that as elected officials, new business is a time on the agenda for us to be able to bring things forward that maybe we're advocating for as individuals or advocating for on behalf of our community members. And this does allow action to quickly get it onto the agenda for future study sessions. So it is a path that would be available to us. Again, not necessarily trying to be a gotcha, but opening the door to say, if we can get the votes, let's go ahead and see if we can get it on the agenda for future coordination, again, through the mayor and deputy mayor. And I will pause with that. And Mayor Backus, did you have more you wanted to add?
I did, because the way it is written does allow for those gotchas. And I have experienced some of those in the past. And again, the problem is making sure that council, even in the best of intentions, could be bringing something up that is inappropriate for the council floor. It could put us in, into litigation. It could be embarrassing. And the reason that the 48 hours notice to the chair, either the deputy mayor or the mayor, depending on the situation, was to make sure that we could vet those ideas, that there were no issues legally or in any other fashion. So removing that can put council in a precarious situation. So the 48 hours is in there as well. Not, not for anything to try and keep you from bringing something forward, but to make sure that we are working collaboratively to ensure that what's brought onto the council floor is appropriate for the council floor.
Thank you for your input, mayor. As chair and as a member of the committee, I understand that things can be a question or be messy. But with this item, it is meant to allow intake for council members to bring things forward. And whether those are uncomfortable or not, we are elected officials and that would be something available to us without throttling or without necessarily having to go through advanced agenda. So this item, I'm hearing much discussion on. We can put it in the holding pattern. We're almost out of time as we get towards wrapping up for the night. Councilmember Emma.
I have a question. You can ask for consent how we feel to keep it as 48 hour ahead. And we done it before. Some council will bring something to the floor rather than keep it in the parking. After the mayor explain it, it's the reason not for council to protect the city from suing. And I seen it now, they, in the news, council said blah, blah, blah. That's the reason. So I think for courtesy, you don't know who's the chair at the time. Maybe be the mayor, maybe the deputy mayor, or maybe the chair will be the person who's special focus area. So I think for courtesy, we keep it as before. That's my thinking.
Thank you, Councilmember Emma. I think we have a lot to consider on this item. And as I mentioned, I am looking to wrap us up.
I understand that, but I had a comment from prior.
Councilmember Sturgis.
So my concern is, is that we're making definitive comments or comments that, at the end of the day, I don't think any of us could stand behind 100%. And so when we talk about our meetings with deputy mayors or with the mayor, so the mayor has one-on-ones with us, the deputy mayor has one-on-ones with us. So we can talk about the importance of what those meetings are. But I think that it's super important for, in what I've observed as a new council member, is that we like to generally point the finger. And that's really unhealthy. And there are several people who have rescheduled their meetings with deputy mayor or rescheduled their meetings with mayor and then are pointing the finger. And I think that's inappropriate. And I don't think it's okay for us to use generalizations.
Councilmember Sturgis, I think you're moving it to a question of courtesy and not staying germane to the topic.
Germane to the topic is that when, when we look at what new business is and when we look at our responsibility as a city council member to bring new business to the table, not to do it in, in a way where it is not planned or prepared in our role as city council members. And then for us to be using meetings with deputy mayor or mayor as scapegoats of when, or when we are not allowed to bring topics to the table. I, I just am, I have some concerns here. And I think it would look bad on us to be bringing topics to the table last minute at a council meeting when we have not vetted our, our discussion topics.
Thank you for your input. As I noted, with this item, we have some differing opinions and maybe beneficial to keep it in the holding pattern. So we can hold on that one until we regroup and pick up and continue to go through rules and procedures. Final statement from the chair is that, as noted at the beginning, everything in the document is vetted to ensure that we are not introducing anything illegal, to make sure that we're not creating more work for staff and to make sure that the recommendations would support, you know, would be beneficial for the community. And so I stand by those tenants that we set out with at the beginning of this meeting. And that is where I would like us to stay focused as we wrap up and continue this in another study session. With that, back to you.
Okay, we don't have any further discussion. Maybe it's the job.